Okay, it told me recording is in progress, so we must be good. Alright, so let's call the regular June meeting of the Union Township Planning Commission to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Share my screen here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. So, roll call, please.
Alright, excuse me if I mispronounce anyone's name. Lap?
I'm attending from Union Township, Isabella County, Michigan.
Fuller?
Present, Union Township.
Darren?
Present, Union Township.
Albrecht?
Present, Union Township, Isabella County.
Shingles?
Present, Mount Pleasant, Isabella County.
Buckley?
Present, Union Township, Isabella County.
Squattrito?
President, City of Mount Pleasant, Isabella County.
And Thering?
Present, Union Township, Isabella County, Michigan.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll get to it under some later business, but just as a side note, we obviously have a new old member. So Lisa Cody, who was our representative from the Board of Trustees, as I think you all probably saw, stepped down from that position after three years. So we want to thank her for her service. And then the Board of Trustees has appointed James Thering as their representative on the Planning Commission, and he was previously on the Planning Commission before being elected to the Board of Trustees. So, welcome back to James. Alright, so next item is approval of tonight's agenda. So tonight's agenda has the usual reports, and then it's got six new business items. And no other business. Is there anything else that anyone is aware of that needs to be on tonight's agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as prepared.
I move to approve the agenda as prepared.
Support.
The motion is by Lap, second by Fuller, to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Commissioner Darren?
With the knowledge we now have with James joining us, should we update the agenda to reflect that? Especially with 6A.
In terms of what? Substituting his name for Lisa's name?
So that we can put him on the spot.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll assume, yes, I mean, it's a report from the Board of Trustees. And so, yes, we'll assume that the report will come from the current representative from the Board of Trustees. Anything else? So with that minor note, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please either say aye or indicate with a raised hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm going to declare that that motion carried. So we have our agenda. Next item is approval of the minutes. So we last met at our regular May meeting, which was May 18th. And so you have minutes from the May 18th meeting. Are there any corrections to the May 18th minutes?
Mr. Chair, before we go any further, can I, I just need to weigh in. All of my information is at home, because I ended up getting stuck in the meeting, so didn't have enough time to drive home. And the link that was sent out earlier, that Peter sent, is a broken link. So is there, is there, the agenda and the minutes are usually in a packet, and it's usually an online link, but I can't get to it.
So, if you, if you just go to the township's webpage, and just, that's what I did, so the revised version, the link was broken. So if you just go to the township's webpage and follow the link to meeting packets.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Alright, so any, any comments on the on the minutes from May 18th? They were quite extensive. We had a lot of action items. They looked good to me. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 18th.
I'll make that motion, that we approve the minutes from May 18th as presented.
There a second?
I'll second.
So the motion was by Darren, with a second by Albrecht, to approve the May 18th minutes as submitted. Further discussion? Seeing none, again, I'll just ask for a voice hand signal vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye or give a thumbs up.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion is declared carried. Next item is Correspondence Board Report slash Presentations. First item, we've updated to Thering updates from Board of Trustees. So in addition perhaps to announcing your own appointment, if there's anything else you'd like to tell us about current board activity, the floor is yours.
At this point, no, I did talk with Lisa a little bit about some of the things that the Planning Commission likes to hear. If there's anything that you can think of that you would like to know, I guess, just holler at me, but other than that, tonight I don't have anything, but I'm sure by the next meeting I'll have something for you.
Okay, any questions for James related to the Board of Trustees? I think in addition to appointments, I mean, she's been reporting on, on what they do with our recommendations and other actions related to actions that we've taken, so those sorts of things. And then, of course, anything that's coming down the pike at us that you're aware of could be subject for a future report. So if there's no questions, we'll move on. Next one is Buckley updates from Zoning Board of Appeals.
As is the case for much of the year, this year, there was no meeting held on the Board of Appeals in June. And we've already received a cancellation for the meeting in July, so I have no additional updates at this time.
Okay, any questions for Ryan for ZBA? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Next one is Darren updates from sidewalks and pathways.
We did meet on the 25th of last month, and the priorities that were submitted for future goals or future projects for the township were put together by Rodney and Peter, I believe. But then we reviewed them all, and the outcome of the meeting, we presented to Rodney consensus on the priorities for the years moving forward. So, a lot of it was reflected in previous priorities, but we felt strong on, most of those were the correct path forward. So Rodney has in his hands what the, what the subcommittee feels should be the priorities.
Nice. Questions, Jessica?
I'm just curious about the process. Do these go to the Planning Commission, or do they go straight to the Township Trustees?
So these are, these priorities end up being considered as part of the fiscal year 2022 budget. So these will be going to the Board for that kind of a framework. They're actually going to be part of the monthly report to the Board, and they'll be coming to them for this, their meeting next week.
Other questions for Mike on sidewalks and pathways issues? Okay, thank you. And then, the last listed item is a suggestion that we accept Commissioner Cody's resignation from the Planning Commission with a vote of thanks. Is that, is that a, I mean, the thanks goes without saying, but we'll be happy to do that. Do we need to accept the resignation as a, as a formal action?
It has been recommended that we, we take a formal action. I could certainly explain why, but it, but it involves essentially confirming that the change has taken place. So it, it's, it's worth making the motion both to accept and offer the, the thanks.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to that effect.
Oh, that we accept Commissioner Cody's resignation with a vote of thanks.
So the motion was made by Shingles, and I saw Darren with the second. Any further discussion? I'm going to, unless anyone objects, I'm going to suggest a voice vote slash hand signal. All in favor of the motion, please say aye and/or thumbs up.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, I will declare that that motion carried. And once again, please convey our thanks to Lisa next time any of you see her. Alright, so any other correspondence or reports that, or presentations that need to be dealt with at this time? Alright, so we'll move on. So the next item is public comment. So we haven't, we have at least two public hearings tonight. So this is not the public hearings, this is the portion of our meeting that is always devoted to public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So individuals who are here to offer public comment on the, on the applications are, will have that opportunity later on. So this is, this is public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. If there's a member of the audience who would like to comment, we would ask you to activate your raise hand button, we'll recognize you, enable you to speak. Give us your name and address for the minutes, and limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment is open at 7:15.
So just as a quick comment, we have two attendees are on the phone. For those that are on the phone, you can electronically raise your hand by hitting the star key and then the number nine, star nine, raise your hand.
Okay, thank you for that pointing that out. I'm assuming most people are here for the agenda items, but I am looking at the attendees list, and I'm not seeing any raised hands. We will also have, in addition to the public hearings, we also have extended public comment towards the end of the meeting, which is open to any, any topics. Okay, so not seeing any raised hands at this time, I'm going to assume that we don't have any general public comments. So we'll go ahead and close that back up at 7:16, and we'll move on to our new business. So we've got, as I mentioned, six new business items. The first one is PSUP 21-01, Special Use Permit Application for the new Isabella County Jail and Sheriff's Office. So I will turn it over to Rodney for an introduction, then we'll move to the public hearing, and then we will move forward from there.
Thank you very much. You have, before you, a project you, you've had some experience with before, county jail site at a different location. This location is on the south side of East Remus Road. It is located to the east of South Isabella Road. It's essentially more or less across the street from the Maury Courts Recreation Facility. This, the Isabella County, as noted in our report from June 2nd, has made a determination that, that a new jail facility is necessary, and a new sheriff's office as well. They have been looking for at various locations and have settled on this one as the appropriate site. They, substantial amount of due diligence related to this property before making the application. The, the building is proposed to be about a 60,000 square foot facility that would house as both county jail and the sheriff's office. We have provided all the required public notices in accordance with our ordinance and the state law. And you have before you, as I said, a copy of our report, which includes references to the standards for, for special use permit approval that apply. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that come up, and we do have a number of folks here representing the applicant that I can bring in, if you're ready, move them over as panelists.
Um, maybe we'll wait till after the public hearing, unless there are questions now. Any questions for Rodney at this time, from commissioners? Okay, not seeing any. So we'll move on to the public hearing. As Rodney mentioned, the special use application, public hearing has been duly announced in the newspaper. It's been mailed to the appropriate property owners and so on. I want to remind everyone, so we want to give everyone who wants to speak an opportunity to speak. The purpose of the public hearing is to give the general public an opportunity to speak. The applicant will have their own opportunity, ample opportunity after that to address the commission, to stand for questions and so on. So it's really not intended to be a back and forth, it's not intended to be a, a point of, where the applicant, you know, goes on. It's really to give other folks who are not the applicant an opportunity to address the commission. So as I said, we want to give everyone an opportunity to speak. So once it's open, we will again ask you to raise your hand, then we'll move you across, and you'll be able to unmute, turn your camera on and address us. Please give us your name and address for the minutes, and we ask that you address your comments to the commission and limit at least your initial comments to three minutes. Once everyone who wants to speak has had an opportunity to speak, we will consider recognizing people for additional comments. So, the public hearing on PSUP 21-01, I have the number right on that? Yes, is open at 7:20, and I see a Mark Smith, was he, is he a public comment? Okay, then, Mr. Smith, if you want to unmute yourself, and also, if you, you're welcome to turn your camera on, you don't have to, but it's always nice to see people, but that's up to you. But public comment, or the public hearing is open, so we're interested in hearing what people have to say.
Thank you. This is Mark Smith, 3515 Riverbank Trail, Mount Pleasant, Michigan. I'm, I'm before you tonight to represent the Renaissance Public School Academy. I am the Board President of the Renaissance Public School Academy. And in my role as representative of the school, I, and I feel and its stakeholders, you know, which would include the kids and the parents and the staff and the other board members. I just, I'm a little surprised by the speed of, of the, of this item of the, of the jail and the, and the Sheriff's Department coming before us. I hadn't known about it till, till today. I understand there is procedures in place to let us know. But I guess, long story short, I anticipate a lot of questions from those I represent. I know this is a special use permit, which I assume means it's outside of the norm of the zoning rules. Obviously, the subject matter of a jail and a sheriff's station is a little bit unusual. And so frankly, I'd just like to ask the commission to table the, the, the item so that I have the time to gather the input from the people I represent, and so that frankly, the, the county and the Sheriff's Department have a chance to answer their questions. I feel a little more time would, would do us, the whole community in the neighborhood and the whole community at large would do us all some good. So, thank you for taking the time to hear my comments.
Thank you very much. Other public comments? I see Shelley and then Lisa.
Hi.
Hello?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thanks.
Okay, this is Shelley Smith, and I also live at 3515 Riverbank Trail in Mount Pleasant. And I'm actually attending on behalf of the Discovery Museum Board. And I think, similar to what Mark said, we are a little surprised at the speed with which this is happening. And we first heard about it last week sometime, and only today about this meeting. And just have concerns about how it will affect our family-oriented business. Being nonprofit, we really rely on our visitation and that community support, and having families outside at our facility, inside in the parking lot. Yeah, just have some concerns about the increased traffic, I guess, even to the point of the jail sign at the same spot where our, our sign might be. And I don't, I read through the packet, I read through the, the proposal. I don't know exactly how those things will be addressed, but I wanted to bring up those concerns.
Good, thank you. And then Lisa Phelps is next?
I've asked Lisa to unmute.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Phelps, and I'm the Executive Director of the Mount Pleasant Discovery Museum. And I'm just having the same concerns as both Mark and Shelley. Maybe we weren't on the list to be notified about this, so even though we feel like we are neighbors, we knew nothing really about this until I heard about it first last Monday. And we started coming up with a list of, you know, questions, pros and cons, and we really just couldn't come up with any pros. So we're just wondering, you know, what's, what's involved? Why is this good for our community and our campus in general with the elementary school, the children's museum, and the family rec center? What, what makes this a good idea for our community? So we would ask also that it be tabled, and we can have time to just kind of wrap our brains around this whole idea.
Okay, thank you very much. So we've got over here. Any other public comments? I know we received at least one written one that was forwarded to us today. Does either Peter or Rodney want to read that into the record?
I can do that. We did receive an email from George and Sherry Sponseller at 1309 South Linwood Drive in Mount Pleasant. And it notes, "Attention, Planning Commission, we are the property owners of, of that address, and would like to state," I'm sorry, I apologize, "we're the proprietors of 3325 South Isabella Road, and would like to state that we have no objections to the special use request for the Isabella County Jail. Our property lies within the 300-foot buffer zone." That's referring to the public hearing notice, the distances required for that.
And that was the only written comment that was received?
That is correct.
Okay. Alright, so public hearing is still open. Other public comments? I want to hear from everyone who wants to, to speak before we close it and move on. Well, we definitely want to thank folks for taking the time to come to the meeting and give us their comments. We always like to have public comments on, on things like this. I'm not seeing any others at this time, so I think I'm going to going once, going twice. And we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:28, and thank the public for their comments. Those will be in the minutes. And so, I don't know if it's convenient to, to move them back to the other side, but you can probably go ahead and move the applicant's representatives over at this point. Okay, take, take care of that, just a moment.
Well, while they're coming over, I'm just going to share my screen for just a moment for the audience. This is part of the meeting packet. Can everyone see the aerial photo?
Yes, well, I see it.
So this, this is Remus Road going across the top, Isabella Road to the, to the left, US 127 to the right. This is the Maury Courts Building. Behind it is the Ice Arena. Discovery Museum is right here. So I just want to kind of, for those that were in the audience that were asking, give, give an idea of the relationship between the proposed facility, jail facility, and the existing activities. You can see that the eastern driveway of the proposed jail lines up with what essentially is a service drive into the Maury Courts site. This, the main drive, main interest, the Maury Courts and the Discovery Museum is here. Just want to share that for, for reference.
Thank you, that, yeah, it's useful to see. One thing I want to ask real quickly of Rodney, just before we get into this. When, when property owners get notified, the property owners within 300 feet, is that all property owners, or is it just residential property owners?
No, it's, it's any owner of, of property and, and any occupant property within 300 feet is provided a notice. It, it happens that that does not actually include very many properties because of the, the relationship between the site and, and its surroundings. The, the, I would assume that the Discovery Museum may be just outside of that range. In,
That was going to be my question. I'm, I'm thinking Renaissance Academy must be outside of that range, but
Yes, absolutely.
Even, even the, even the museum, okay, alright. Okay, so, so we'll move on to the next step, which is updates from staff and the applicant. So we have Rodney's update and report dated June 2nd. So normally, at this point, we give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission, anything you'd like to say upfront, and then commission will have an opportunity to ask questions, and we'll go from there. And then, um, commission will have an opportunity to ask questions, uh, and we'll go from there.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Daryl Mahan from Integrated Architecture. Um, I'm the director of architecture here and the project manager. Uh, first just wanted to make sure everybody can hear me. Okay. Am I coming through clear? Great. Then with me is Scott Ben, uh, principal of Integrated Architecture. Um, so first of all, thank you for your time tonight. Uh, we thank, uh, the township of Union for just their patience, their support, their leadership. And I appreciate the, the commission's time this evening. Uh, before I get into some, some facts and a brief overview, uh, we have with us tonight as well Sheriff Maine. Um, I'll let Sheriff Maine, uh, give a, give a general introduction. Uh, we'll give a bit of an overview on the site and the building and then we'll be available for questions.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, appreciate the, uh, the time tonight for a few minutes. Um, you know, just a couple of things that, you know, when I hit on, you know, we talked about on the previous site, you know, the, the things of, you know, there's no, uh, EVO or driving operations, there's no outside firearms operations. None of that stuff occurs on that, on that sheriff's office site and will not be occurring. Um, a couple of things and, uh, you know, as far as the structure in the building, you know, there's, there's, uh, no outside fencing area for inmates. There's no, um, you know, I think people think when they think of jails, they think of caustine wires and those kinds of things. None of that exists. I will tell you that we are working on some public outreach. We knew that was part of the, um, the questions that the board had last time on the previous, uh, the site. Uh, we were actually working with, um, some folks that are tied in with the Discovery Museum and the school and, uh, the Maury Courts. Um, and working on the dates of their meetings to, to provide an opportunity to answer questions and, and sit down with them and show them the facility that we're looking at. And, and, um, hopefully be able to ease some of those tensions and concerns. You know, it's always, um, any type of project like this certainly has, has that type of concern. And I'll, I'll remind everybody, you know, for sixty, almost sixty-three years now, uh, you know, the current facility is set. Um, uh, I can, you know, right across the street is residential, a half a block is commercial, um, block and a half is a school. And then probably less distance, um, to, to Renaissance School. Uh, you know, we have other schools from the Mount Pleasant District that are, that are close to that. Uh, we have a great relationship, I think, with the school. Um, bringing a law enforcement, another law enforcement agency on that road, which is heavily traveled, will increase police presence and security. It'll, it'll address traffic concerns and speeding that we see on that road more. Um, I think there are some good benefits, uh, for this project on, on that site. So look forward to having those, those meetings and maybe some of those tough questions I'm sure they have for us. But I look forward to getting those meetings set up and, and, uh, having those.
Any questions for, for, for the sheriff from commissioners at this point? Okay. Well, he's not going anywhere. So if they do come up, we'll, we'll circle back to you. So, uh, we're ready to go back to the architects, I think, at this point.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Phil. Um, so, um, so as most of you on the commission would have probably recognized, um, not much has changed other than our site of this project. So the building, um, for all intents and purposes are, is the same. It's the same building, the same design, same occupancy, same size as we had at the previous site. Um, as you know, we're on an approximate forty-five acre site. Uh, the building occupies around a sixty thousand square foot footprint. Um, it's made up of a, what we're kind of calling the liner. So the, the, the northern facade and the, the western facade are really the one-story, um, elements of the building that are public facing. Um, within that is a, uh, kind of tucked back, we're calling backup house, um, to the southeast part of the site. Um, bounded by pretty heavy woodland and offering a really nice buffer is a two-story pod. And this is the inmate housing pod. Um, this has, um, up to a maximum of a hundred eighty-seven beds. Um, it is, is it, it is completely opaque in nature. Um, it is not have outside windows. Uh, we are meeting daylight requirements for the inmates through skylights. Uh, there's secured skylights. Uh, we do offer, uh, some daylight and ventilation through, um, an indoor exercise area. Um, that, that ventilation, um, and daylight happens through an elevated, um, opening in the wall. So that's, it's twelve foot higher. So it's on the southern facade, not viewable to, to anybody to, um, really the, the, the north, the west or the east. Um, from a site standpoint, um, there are the westernmost drive is dedicated to public. That is the public and visitor entry. Um, yeah, dedicated specifically to that, that drive would connect to a, a public parking area. Uh, from, from which a, a visitor or, or someone from the public would enter the facility through the entry of the, the, the west facade. Um, it's, as you've recognized in the, the renderings, it's a highly governmental, um, looking building. It's, you know, the days of, of institutional buildings for, for uses such, such as these is, is kind of behind us thankfully. Um, the sheriff's office does have windows and daylight and it's, it's really the only portion of the building that would be, uh, visible through, through windows where a person could see activities or whatever through, um, from the outside. From a overall sighting standpoint, um, the, the building is located around four hundred feet or so off of Remus Road to the south. And around the same distance, um, to the east from the western, um, property line. Uh, going back to just drives and vehicular circulation, the easternmost drive, um, for this east is dedicated to, uh, specifically to staff use, uh, patrol vehicles, um, et cetera. Uh, the, the northern parking lot dedicated to, again, staff. It's a secure parking lot, um, bounded by a six-foot high, um, ornamental, uh, fence, um, with gates for them to ingress and egress as needed. Again, uh, completely secure. That's really the, the majority of the fencing on the site. And then the public parking area, um, i- is unfenced and, and open, just as you would find in any, uh, governmental, uh, building. The, the site landscaping, we are sensitive to, uh, the neighboring parcel to the west. Um, we've located, as you, you've seen on the landscape plan, a series of, um, evergreen trees per the township's ordering ordinance, the spacing, the size. Uh, to just, to prohibit or to, to just filter, um, headlights, uh, going to the west from people exiting and entering the site. So it's really, it's really with that sensitivity that we've provided that screening and buffering to the west. Um, everybody knows we have a great natural buffer to the south, um, heavily wooded. Um, the, the parcel is made up of an additional swath, a five acre parcel that, uh, you noted in the, in the thin strip below the, the forty acre parcel. That's, um, that makes up the predominant area of our site. And then of course to the east, um, highway one twenty-seven. So that, that's the, and we all know that that has a bit of buffering too. Uh, we do not anticipate, uh, any, any movements of any sort for inmates. Um, i- in the, in the rear or anywhere on the site. Uh, really, any, all you would see, um, would be vehicular movements, um, from that corner of the site. Um, pay attention to, uh, just, you know, beautifying the, uh, the site. Uh, we're being honoring kind of the natural, um, buffering, the rural, rural buffering that already exists here. Um, through the setback, um, we're proposing a series of, um, kind of wildflower mix area, the natural areas. Um, that wouldn't be cared for by the, the county on a regular basis, but would look, appear more natural. Along with, um, more turf areas, irrigated lawns, uh, trees, shrubs, et cetera. Uh, we are proposing a sidewalk connection, um, bounding, uh, south side of Remus Road from the westernmost, uh, property line to the westernmost drive and then internal to the site. And there's, there's a series of sidewalk connections within the sidewalk per, uh, Union Township ordinance. Um, again, I think that from a, from an architectural standpoint, um, in a, a highly governmental, um, looking, uh, uh, really a strong gesture to be enduring. Um, all, uh, brick masonry and insulated metal panel. So these are, um, low maintenance materials. Uh, the goal here is to provide the county with something that they can be proud of, uh, long-term and don't have to worry about, uh, paint and upkeep. So modern materials, um, long-lasting and enduring. I, I think that I, I didn't want to go much further. I know there's a lot of pragmatic, um, on a data there, but, um, I think that, that explains generally, uh, the site, the building. Um, I'd like to turn it back to the planning commission for comments and questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So, um, just to remind the commissioners, we have two, uh, issues. The first one is the special use permit itself. All right. Which is not dependent specifically on the site plan, although it ultimately one has to have an approved site plan to move forward. But, uh, as you know, the, the special use permit is its own question. So, um, we'll take that up first. Um, are there any questions from commissioners at this time, questions and comments for, uh, either the sheriff or the, or the architects? And I will note that, uh, there's a, there's another hand up from one of the, uh, public commenters. Um, if we were in meeting in person and a person had, who had commented, we're sitting there with their hand up. I would at least ask the commission, uh, well, they've taken it down now. I don't know if it was a mistake or not. Uh, okay. Well, if it's down, I won't worry about it, but, uh, sometimes people want to say more. But so anyway, uh, open for comments and questions from commissioners. Just let me switch back to panelists here. Uh, Commissioner Buckley.
I'm going to do my due diligence at least and ask Sheriff Maine, given, given the public comment that we had in the special use permit and understanding that we are looking at two separate, uh, actions that we'd be taking on a special use versus a site plan review. Um, in addition to Sheriff's Maine, Maine's desire to, uh, work with some of the local institutions like the Discovery Museum and Renaissance. I'm just curious as to what Sheriff's Maine opinion is on the potential tabling of one or both of these items. Uh, if he has any direct thoughts, he'd like to make a comment on that for us.
Well, and it, it, this might be more, um, suited for, uh, Darryl, uh, and that group as well, but I can pretty much guess what they're going to say. You know, we, we, um, every delay we have here is costing us, uh, you know, additional monies. And we, um, you know, the, the facility that we're in is certainly not, uh, getting any better. You know, we're having more and more problems every day. So, you know, to, to, to hold back on the project, um, would not be, I think, our best interest at this point in time for the county, the sheriff's office and the jail. We certainly are ready to, um, have meetings with those folks, uh, you know, at their regular meetings or if they want to schedule some, some, uh, you know, impromptu ones. Um, we certainly can make that happen here. So in my opinion, and maybe Darryl can, uh, can, can answer up too. But, um, I, I, I don't think we are in the position where we want to set, uh, and table this.
Yeah, I would, um, I would just add to that. You know, anybody that's, you know, listened to the news, everybody's aware of the, just the, the costs that are, um, being attached to construction projects with supply chain issues, with material shortages. Um, we're up against this. It's a very, it's a very real concern of this project and many projects that we're working on. Uh, we're also up against the winter. Um, we're, we're highly motivated to, uh, get this project going, um, in twenty twenty-one. We're, we're up against the winter. Winter conditions often, uh, result in additional construction costs with, with, with heating and excavation and concrete work. And, and all the things that go along with building in winter. So, um, we, there are a couple of forces at play here, the, the economy, um, the end of the construction industry, um, labor availability, supply chain issues and costs, which are affecting, um, everything. It just seasonal buildability for this project.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Lab.
All right, for the delay there, um, I do have a question, uh, though it's not really the business of the planning commission, but I am curious as to, um, whether you think you can, the estimated cost will still be within the budget approved by the county? Or whether the, uh, in, increase in supply costs right now in the construction industry, uh, might dramatically impact the cost of the jail?
Our construction manager partner, Clark Construction, who, uh, they're not on the call tonight. They're, they're, they're actively evaluating that. Um, we, with, with this re-sighting of the project, um, and just looking at the, you know, a lot of the utility connections and supply chain issues. They're, they're currently updating their estimate. So it's, it's a moving, um, it, it, it's a little bit of a moving estimate as, you know, things change in the industry. But, um, so we'll know more within the next couple of weeks or so. I, I can't, I don't have any numbers in front of me. So I was like, can commit to that, but it is a, it is a sensitivity that we have.
Uh, Commissioner Albrecht.
Cause I just had a question in regards to the timeframe from actual start to finish, you know, in terms of what is a typical, barring no or unforeseen circumstances, how long of a project would this be from start to finish?
Yeah, I, right now, the construction duration from groundbreaking to, uh, we'll just call it ribbon cutting, um, is around sixteen months. Um, so again, that's, it's, um, highly impacted by this seasonal, um, the, the time at which, you know, steel is being erected, concrete is being poured. Um, it's highly dependent on just getting materials in a timely fashion. Uh, we know joists and deck wood, everybody's heard about wood and just, um, getting, getting them to job sites, um, in an expedient way. Um, so it's, it's, yeah, i- i- it's a tough commitment to make, but I would say in a, in a, not a perfect world, but a, a world, maybe six months ago, this is about a sixteen month, uh, construction duration.
Commissioner Buckley, Commissioner Buckley.
Uh, again, noting that, uh, we're taking, um, we're looking at two separate actions today. The, the special use being one and the safe plan review is the other. Um, do, and this is maybe a question, uh, uh, for our consultants. Uh, do you feel that there is a sufficient amount of cushion, uh, between, uh, the decisions we make today and the commencement of construction? That should there be feedback, uh, pertinent feedback or, um, you know, potentially unexpected feedback that you receive from some of the local neighbors that you're, uh, seeking input from? Uh, that you would have time to, to, to bring any kind of revisions to a site plan to us based on that feedback? If there was any that there, if there's a desire to, to make that change or is, or do you expect the commencement of construction to begin virtually immediately after receiving approvals?
Yeah, this is, uh, given this as a preliminary site plan, um, review, um, we believe there's time. We believe there's time to react and on behalf of the county and speaking for the county, um, the county is very interested in, in making this work for its neighbors and being a good neighbor. Um, so, you know, I guess going back to the, you know, the schedule question and commencing construction. Um, you know, it are, it'd be our goal, we, have we set a commencement of construction date? No, we haven't yet. Uh, we're still evaluating bid packaging and timing, uh, related to just steel increase of costs. Um, our design assistance partners and their availability, just given labor shortages. So, um, the answer to that would be, yes, there's time to address that.
I could, I can add a, just a, a few thoughts to that in terms of the, the process, uh, as we, I think we already talked about, uh, your role in this, in the special use permit, uh, application is, is as a recommending body. Uh, you make a recommendation for action on the special use permit ultimately to the board of trustees, which has final authority. Uh, whether to grant or, or, or not grant a special use permit. If you, if you take action on the special use permit tonight, uh, there is a board of trustees, trustees meeting next Wednesday, that would be the twenty-third. And the, the, that special use permit application could be on that agenda. And so I've just, uh, because I'm not asking you to take action or not take action, so that's entirely up to you. But that is a potential timeframe, uh, for a final action on the special use permit. Which, uh, if, if that process followed, uh, at, at the very, at a very tight timeframe, could actually bring the, the final site plan back to you at your July meeting, just because of how the timing works, uh, for those meetings. So this is really up to the applicant is, is how quickly they, they, uh, do come back with a final site plan. Uh, but they would, they would not be able to apply for final site plan approval until after the, ultimately the board of trustees acts and the special use permit. Um, and, and of course you, you also would have to act on the preliminary site plan, uh, tonight for all that, that process to take place. So the speed at which this can happen, it, it. Tonight for all that that process to take place, so the speed at which this can happen, it it could conceivably move forward very quickly. But there would be. Still time because you are, you would be looking at ultimately a final site plan, which has all the detail on it, including the full landscape plan. Including all those details about screening that that might be provided. All of that is part of the final site plan. And so they they would have an opportunity to respond, the comments they heard tonight. Any comments that may come up at the at a board of trustees meeting, anything that they may receive separately. You know, they can certainly respond to that on the final site plan.
Thanks Rodney, I was at least from where I stand, I'm I'm. Less concerned about the special use permit action that we take today and more concerned about just having the ability. For the applicant to 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 be able to kind of follow through with what they're suggesting, and that's gathering feedback, and it it sounds like what. You've suggested and what we've heard tonight is there would be opportunity to to gather some feedback like that in the process.
Yeah, I have to say, I mean, I I appreciate that the 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 the. Desire to gather feedback, I I wish it had, at least some of it had taken place. Before we got to this point, because we still have the the issue of having to approve or not approve. A special use permit or possibly as they request postponed consideration of it. So it's always better if those sorts of conversations, I think, take place before one gets to that. To that decision point. I will say, though, that the 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 speed that the that I think the public, some of the public that spoke perceive. Is partly related to the fact that this is already the second parcel that they've looked at, and so. This process has been going on a while, and and so those that. That are are paying attention to, you know, the community would be would be hard pressed not to know. That that this has been an issue and that they've been looking at property on the east side of of Union Township for a while now. I do want to ask the the. The sheriff, one other question. You haven't been sheriff here a great long time, but I'm assuming you know the history. You made a good point that the the existing jail has been. Down in the heart of downtown Mount Pleasant for about sixty years. How many, how many incidents have there been? In the last few decades, for example, of any sort of escape or any sort of. Anything to deal with with the handling of of prisoners that has gone awry?
So I've I've been law enforcement in this community for twenty years. I've been public safety for thirty in this this community, so. You know, I don't go back sixty years for sure. I'm starting to get there, but not yet. You know, the only one that comes to mind was decades ago, and that was before. We have a tunnel between the sheriff's office and the courthouse now, a secured tunnel. That was before that tunnel, and they used to walk inmates out of the jail over to the courthouse. And there was an inmate that had kind of planned an escape and then did escape and and got away for a few days before he was caught. I don't know all the details to it. You know, I was I was pretty young at that time, but I do remember that. Outside of that, I don't recall any, you know, one of the things that, you know, we hear often, a couple of things, you know, we hear often is. We have all these people from downstate, you know, that were housing for other agencies, you know, that hasn't happened for a decade, it hasn't happened under my toolage. At all, and then. The, you know, when when a when an inmate gets released from from the jail. There's a lot of misunderstanding that that they just kind of hang around or start walking around downtown, and that that never. In my experience in the five years I've been here as the sheriff, I don't see that. I mean, there's always a car waiting for them or there there's something. The only time there's been one incident that I can tell you that that was a homeless person, they had nowhere to go. And we spent about three and a half hours working with that person. And and eventually took them to a shelter in Saginaw. So we want to make sure that that's never going to happen, that these folks aren't just walking around when they get released out of the door and. And and ninety nine point nine percent of the time, someone's there to pick them up, or we'll take them to a bus stop or something like that, but. You know, those things just they they we just don't have a lot of that activity that goes on, and and that's the only escape that I can think of. You know, there's been a couple of work releases, like they were working in a village or. Fairgrounds or something, and you know, maybe they were there on a drunk driving or something and then didn't come back, so. Theoretically, those are escapes, but not from the facility, they they were out on a work release.
Okay.
There's a question.
Yes, thank you. So I don't know the order, I was watching the sheriff, but I've got Commissioner Thering and then Commissioner Fuller.
Sorry if I missed part of the conversation, but Sheriff Maine had talked about getting with the. Discovery Museum and the Renaissance Academy for discussion, answering questions, or maybe a personal level. I don't know if I, somebody had said this or not, but would be worthwhile to have a member of the township present, just so we could get that information back. Quicker. To the. Well, Board of Trustees and or Planning Commission. Is that? I I don't know if that's something that wants to be.
As far as, I mean, I I think we're going to be at a public meeting, so, you know, it's certainly open. I I have no objections to it. I mean, I think, you know, all the parties involved and. That'd be a good thing. Now, I don't, there's a protocol or procedural thing that maybe that's an issue, but. On on the county side, my side, I I have no objection to that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they're. Subject to the Open Meetings Act and I'm a hundred percent sure on that, but if it was something that was to happen. Outside of a normal meeting. Just for the sake of. Information. Thanks.
Commissioner Fuller.
Yeah, I can speak to Phil's previous question. I grew up three houses down from the current jail facility, and my parents still live there. The sheriff's office has been a good neighbor to them. There has been questions about sirens. Noise, increased traffic, you know. They don't recognize or they don't even notice, so it's not an issue that. Police officers are driving out of their facility with lights blaring, speeding. So I have had experience living next to the jail. And I don't see. It as an issue.
Okay, thank you. Other comments and questions from commissioners? All gone quiet. Commissioner Fuller.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. To recommend approval. To the township board to approve. P S U P. Twenty one dash oh one special use permit application. From Isabella County for the new Isabella County Jail and Sheriff's Office on approximately forty four point five eight acres of land. Parcel number fourteen dash zero two four dash one zero dash zero zero one. Dash zero two and dash zero zero three dash zero zero. On the south side of East Remus Road in the northwest quadrant of section twenty four. And in the R two A. One and two family zoning district, finding that it fully complies or can comply with section fourteen. Point three, point J. The standards for special use approval.
Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Buckley.
I have no concerns with Commissioner Fuller making the motion. I was I was curious procedurally if it was necessary for us to. I know in the past, at least in practice, we've gone through the. Each criteria of the. The special use. Just as an individual review, I didn't know if that was necessary prior to moving on to a. To a motion or not, just that I bring that to light.
Appreciate that. We could probably still have a motion on the floor and do that. And of course, the the criteria have changed somewhat.
I I would suggest that that the motion, you have a motion on the floor, if it's not seconded, then it should be recognized that it that it fails. To get a second.
Second the motion then.
Did you say you do second the motion?
I would second the motion, yes.
Okay.
I felt that if it had in a packet, it said it complied or can comply with the seven criteria.
Yeah, although that, I mean, that's that's township staff's opinion, and so we may want to, I mean. One way or another, whether it's simply through a vote or whether it's through. An item by item conversation, we have to verify each of us individually that we either agree with that or don't agree with that. But the motion has been made and seconded, so it's on the floor. Commissioner Lab.
I would make a friendly amendment that we adjust the wording to include approval approval with conditions and add the three conditions of final site plan. Is approved to the new Isabella County Jail and Sheriff's Office. Township Public Services Department approval of municipal water and municipal sanitary sewer service extensions to the site. And completion of the roadway paving and additional width surface and turnaround area improvements along the remaining length of East Remus Road to US one twenty seven.
A final site plan has to be submitted and approved before a project can start. Does this? Parcel meet? Public and institutional use is the special use permit is asking.
So are you suggesting that 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 those conditions would be more appropriate with the site plan review rather than?
I do.
So there, if I if I may, Mr. Chair, kind of just to address that.
Yeah, please.
So the 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 three criteria, the three conditions that you see are associated with the the special use. Were included because they're they are associated with the use of the property. That's why they're they were included here. They are not listed under the special, under the site plan item. Because they they are not. They are associated with use more than the than this the site details. The final site plan condition is one we almost always include. When you're recommending on a on a special use permit. And to some extent, you might call it housekeeping, but it it is also a reminder to the applicant and to the board of trustees. That that final site plan is is going to be required. And in part, we do it because we have, we did change our site plan process in the past. When the site plan process was one step. The the site plan would essentially could essentially be approved by you. A contingent among the board's action on the special use permit, so we it's partly a reminder to them that there's also this this turnaround. Step where all the details will be taken care of in the final site plan, so I I do recommend including condition one. Condition two is definitely related to the use, they if they do not have access to. To water and especially to sewer in this case, which is the one that we we had noted in our report as as it can conform. They they obviously can't establish a use on the property. In our report, we we did not, we did use the word can conform. Rather than does not conform, and we did that because it is. With some adjustments or with some additional information, it is possible for them to conform with that standard, for example, in the sewer case. We have not yet received a final answer from the Public Services Department related to. Capacity question. I'm not concerned about it because this site was evaluated by by the applicant early on, they actually did. A more due diligence on the site at first, even before the site that they ultimately came to you before on Summerton. So but nonetheless, I have not received a financial back from the. Public services on the sewer question, so that's why we list it as can conform, and that's why we included condition two. Basically saying that that we do need that final authorization or final confirmation for the Public Services Department. That the utilities are available and can serve the intended use of the property. Condition three is also associated with the use, although these are site plan details to some extent. They are all offsite. The 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 condition three all has to do with Remus Road, Remus Road east of. South Isabella. Especially, well, at least east of Maury Courts is an unimproved road. It is not much more than a two track with a a a very small turnaround area. They are proposing to add some paving, basically paving to their their east driveway. What we have recommended is that they address improving the road throughout its whole length and improving the turnaround area. To to ensure that that emergency vehicles, delivery vehicles, anybody that might go down that way. Whether on purpose or on accident. Can get in and out of that space. We've recommended that they pave it to the end. But we've also included a provision that that they could potentially with if the road commission is agreement. Improve it as a gravel road with a with the full turnaround. And and the the necessary drainage improvements. But these three conditions are strongly recommended to be included in your action on the special use permit. Rather than on on a few on a site plan action later on.
Okay, um, before. Before we go to Commissioner Darren, I guess I want to ask the mover and the seconder of the original motion. Based on the discussion you just heard, do you accept the the amendment, friendly amendment?
I accept. Item one and two. I have a little. Heartburn with completing and paving the road. And turnaround.
The 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 paving the road and the turnaround is just a recommendation, it's not. It is not a requirement at this point.
What says completion of roadway paving?
Yeah, it's recommended to make it a requirement. It's written as a condition. At least in the notes.
Right, the way it reads here. Says the completion of roadway paving.
Rodney.
About the budget for the jail, and then they go add. Three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars for the road paving.
So the road paving is on the plan. They are, they are proposing to pave the road. To the to pass just past their east driveway. That's the road paving we're talking about. The the additional improvements beyond that beyond that is referring to what I just talked about about. Finishing the the remainder of the road along their frontage. This is all part of the frontage of the of the lot that they have proposed to. To develop with this jail, going down to the turnaround so that there is a safe. And functional turnaround at the end, and so that the road, rest of the road. Is safe for even a fire truck that would need to get down there if it went down that way. They could get down there, turn around and come back. The Remus Road is essentially an unimproved road at this point. It is not functional for for emergency equipment or delivery vehicles, quite frankly, it's not even functional for most automobiles. To to get down there and back safely. So we're not, whether they pave the whole length. Or whether they simply improve it and improve the drainage, so it's a functional gravel road east of their east driveway. That is a an issue that they can work out with the road commission. I my prep, my personal preference is is to pave it, but that's not what this condition says, it simply says that they address. The the road and and improve it so it it functions, and that's something ultimately the road commission will decide. All we're saying is that they need to address the remainder of the of the road along their frontage and make it safe.
So in the, I'm I'm looking at the at the recommendations from your report. It says completion of the roadway paving, I guess I should be looking at the motion, but. Yeah, it's in the same same in the motion, completion of the roadway paving and additional width service. Surface and turnaround area improvements along the remaining length, so. Do I understand you to be saying that the intent there is to say that. Completion of the roadway paving would be the portion that they've already proposed to pave. And that the and. Is at least make improvements to the remaining length beyond their east entrance, is that what you're saying?
That is correct, and and certainly if you if you wish, I have no objection to the condition reading. Completion of the roadway paving as proposed on the plan. And then the and. Following that.
Okay, I see there's hands up, but I want to, I want to try to sort this out while we're on it. Is is that more acceptable to the mover and seconder?
We'll have to just. Completion of the roadway paving. That is already on the preliminary site plan.
I apologize. Go ahead.
It should be more to the effect of improve remaining gravel road to the east of the project.
The uh, the issue is basically that the road paving is an offsite improvement. It's not something that we can compel as part of a site plan action. Uh, we can't address it as whether or not the the property is is acceptable for the use. And that's why, as I said, this is a special use item rather than a site plan item. So it it is germane to the special use permit. And by including it as a condition that the paving be uh provided as proposed on the plan, you're simply acknowledging that that's a necessary part of preparing this air this this the road and the site to be able to to uh uh serve the proposed use.
Okay, I'm fine with that because they already planned to pave majority of it.
I'm comfortable with that as well.
All right, thank you. Um, I know there's a bunch of hands up. I just want to ask Sheriff, were you wanting to comment on this issue?
Just real quick, I just want to let the the commission know that I know there's an email thread that I have right now to meet with the road commission and the county administrator and the and the board chair for the county. So hopefully we'll have additional information to share with the commission soon on that, but I know that is in the works with the uh county road commission.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we've got Commissioner Darren and then Commissioner Therry.
Thank you. Uh, so is the intent sheriff to try to get that road a county road? So that it is serviced for accessibility to your driveways?
I I believe it is now. If it is not, I'm not, I'm not aware of that. I believe it is uh to the end of that dead end now.
But and and basically, it's it's if they've already got the turnaround built for uh their plow trucks to turn around. Uh, there wouldn't be much uh more that they would need to do. That sounds like they've already got it built to county road spec. Otherwise, they wouldn't be servicing it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how far they service back there. And again, until we have that meeting with them, um, you know, how far they go back, you know, if there's nobody back there, they may not plow much of that or, you know, to to degrade that or so. But like I said, we we certainly still have more information soon. I'm I'm guessing on that.
Okay, thank you. And so, so with our wording, uh, with the intent that the sheriff's going after. Does our wording match what we think we heard there? Or are we trying to say, no matter if it is county road or not? Saying that if it isn't a county road and there's nobody going to service it in the winter, we're okay with the sheriff just plowing the road back to their driveways.
The the road is a a county public road from from end to end. The when I refer to as an unimproved road, I'm referring to the condition. And that condition has deteriorated over a long period of time. Uh, it was once, I think, a functional gravel road. It probably once had a full turnaround. But but that uh has deteriorated since essentially because of lack of use and perhaps minimal maintenance down to the point where it is by condition, it's an unimproved.
Thank you.
All right, um, Commissioner Therry.
Commissioner Fuller had mentioned something about the cost. The road, from what I understand from Mr. Nanny, is not necessarily in use due to the condition of the road. Why couldn't they just make the turnaround right after their east entrance, rather than making them continue down all the way i- if that's not going to be used?
Uh, I would leave that up to the road commission, but I will say that there is more than one property that is served by this road. There is a a vacant property in the north side that is actually zoned for relatively dense residential use. Uh, it's not currently developed, but but it's currently uh zoned for that. And and so uh, if yeah, I would say that if the county uh owned all the land associated that in, then they probably could make that change, but but they don't. So the uh the road would need to remain open.
Okay, other questions and comments on that or any other issue? So what is your pleasure? Do you want to go down? We have the motion on the floor, but do you want to go down the list? Uh, of criteria, item by item, and have a discussion?
That sounded like the desire.
Okay, then I'll read them and uh essentially, if anyone uh has an opinion, a strong opinion, chime in. Uh, well, the first one is the proposed land use is identified in section three as a special use in the zoning district and and that's simply a a a consequence of the zoning ordinance. Uh, and so it does. Um, second one, the location, design, activities, processes, materials, equipment, and operational conditions of the special use will not be hazardous, detrimental, or injurious to the environment or the public health, safety, or general wel- welfare by reasons of uh traffic. Uh, and there's more than one item. So first it addresses traffic. So this would be concerns with with increased traffic issues in that immediate area.
I I don't have any concerns specifically by, I guess I would just like to draw attention to the point that this is uh, one of the justifications for the extension of the road so as to avoid such issues.
Okay, other comments? Uh, next item is the same preamble, but um will not be hazardous, detrimental, or injurious to the environment or the public health, safety, or general welfare by reason of noise.
I think procedurally, the sheriff's gonna have to work out when they turn their sirens on and traffic wise, how they um exit their facility till they get to the light. I I think that's probably where they're meeting with the neighbors. Uh, will benefit both are are all parties involved. Was to figure out to how how the sheriff handles that in their in that location.
Other comments? All right, um, next one is a continuation of that, uh, will not be hazardous, detrimental, or injurious to the environment or the public health. Safety or general welfare by reason of vibration, smoke, fumes, odors, dust, glare, light, drainage, pollution, or other adverse impacts. Hearing no comments, um. Let's see, the next one, the special use will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in a manner compatible with adjacent uses, the surrounding area, and the intent of the zoning district. Where determined necessary by the planning commission or township board, the applicant has provided adequately for any restrictions on hours or days of operation, minimization of noise, and screening improvements or other land use buffers to ensure land use compatibility and minimize adverse impacts. They certainly have addressed screening and and uh that sort of thing, and that'll be again reviewed in the uh in the site plan. Comments from folks? Uh, the next one, the special use location and character is consistent with the general principles, goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted master plan. I'll note, I think the property itself is designated residential in the master plan in the future land use, but it sits immediately to the south of of the the, what do they call it, recreational type of of property uh to the north. Comments? Uh, the proposed special use confirms to all applicable requirements or standards of this ordinance or other township ordinances. Approval of the special use location will not result in a small residential or non-residential area being substantially surrounded by incompatible uses. It's not a small area and it'll be again adjacent to the the uh recreational property to the north. It's unknown at this point what's going to happen to the south. Uh, the impact of the special use will not exceed the existing or planned capacity of public or municipal services or infrastructure, including but not limited to fire protection services, uh municipal water systems, et cetera. Uh, the impact of the special use will not exceed the existing or planned capacity of public or municipal services or infrastructure, including but not limited to municipal sewage systems. Again, these are all, I realize now, these are all part of the same part. So uh. I'm sorry?
I would the planning commission know this.
This is where reports from staff come into play. And uh, as I said, we preference would be to uh to have a final answer from the Public Services Department, but it is early in the process. And so we don't have that yet from them. Uh, this as I said, with regards to to uh to the sewer, this site was evaluated very early on in the applicant's evaluation process. Uh, and some work was done then. Um, so I I I don't have a concern that they that a uh that that will have a good answer on on this situation. We wouldn't have moved this forward if we felt like there was going to be a problem with it. Uh, but uh, we don't have a final answer yet from public services. So that's why we included that condition in the in the recommend recommended action.
Okay, uh, next one is dealing with uh impact will not exceed the existing or planned capacity uh of roads, uh police protection services, uh refuse disposal. If they exceed the capacity for police protection, they're doing something wrong over there. Uh, the impact of the special use will not exceed the existing or planned capacity of public or municipal services or infrastructure, including but not limited to other utilities, drainage facilities, and public or private wells. Um, they're going to be on township water then, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so shouldn't have any impact on any wells in vicinity. And lastly, uh, the proposed use will not create additional requirements at public cost for services or infrastructure that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. And again, uh, our knowledge of this is based on uh the reports provided, uh, staff report mentions, again, the issue of the roadway and also uh the utilities. The the water and sewer. Comments on any of those? From commissioners? Are you ready to vote? Okay, um, I'm just going to say briefly before we move to a roll call vote. I appreciate the concerns that were expressed by by members of the community. I I I take them seriously. I I think they're they're you know, if this is the first that they've learned about this, I mean, I think it's reasonable that people in position in those types of businesses and and facilities to be concerned. But I do, I do, I do feel that that um you know, the the jail has operated safely in in the middle of a residential and rather densely populated area for a long time. Uh, and so I don't I don't believe that ultimately those concerns will be will be borne out. I think they'll be able to to find that they can live uh, you know, harmoniously with that in their midst. And I really think having having the sheriff's office, you know, a stone's throw away may may be a good thing in the long run. But anyway, that's that's my opinion. But I want I want people to know that that we all take their their concerns expressed uh seriously. So uh, if there's no other comments from commissioners, then uh, did the uh do the architects have a comment? They've got their hand up.
Just a, um, thank you. Just a point of clarification, a question, the language in the point three of the recommendations. Um, you know, regarding the additional paving to the east of the Eastern Most Drive. Um, they mentioned paving specifically. We've talked a little bit about uh gravel road um being an option if that's not feasible. Uh, we'd just like to make sure, and I didn't see that optional language in the special land use recommendation. So I guess I I want to be clear that that option still is um exist with the special land use.
So, uh, Mr. Sheriff, if I may, I can I can read condition three as as was amended. And maybe that that.
Yeah, I, yeah, please read it.
Uh, condition three was, it says completion of the roadway paving as proposed on the plan, comma, and additional width, surface, and turnaround area improvements along the remaining length of East Remus Road to US one twenty seven. So the additional width surface, the the term surface is is deliberately vague to allow for either paving or gravel. Uh, that's the intent of how that language was drafted.
So I think the understanding is that is that my understanding anyway is that it's going to be paved to the point of your east east entrance. And then what beyond that to the east may or may not be paved. But will be improved to the point where vehicles can go down there and turn around. Any any final questions or comments on that? Okay, then I will ask for a roll call vote, please. And just as a reminder, again, you are you are voting uh to recommend approval of the special use permit to the township board. And uh, so yes or no on that?
Shingles?
Yeah, yes.
Therry?
Yes.
Aubrey?
Yes, yes, excuse me.
Squaterito?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Buckley?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
La.
Yes.
All right, eight and eight, yes, motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so this will move to the township board and they will uh possibly have it as early as their meeting next week. So the next item is the site plan, the preliminary site plan application PSPR 21-12 for the county jail off and sheriff's office. But we kind of already had a presentation on it, but again, Rodney, if there's anything you'd like to say upfront?
Well, thank you. Everybody should have a copy of our June 3 preliminary site plan report. And, and of course, the, the applicant's site plan dated May 11th is in the packet. We did note some items and information that, that needed to be corrected. They are details that don't, don't have any significant effect on the overall layout. Just some items that need to be addressed. Similarly with length, some details by sidewalks, the applicants do propose to install a sidewalk along the developed part of their, their, their site. Coming in at least up to the west driveway entrance and then into the site from there. They would need to propose a request for temporary relief for the, for the construction of the remainder of the sidewalk. They do need to show the remainder of the sidewalk along their frontage on the final site plan. And if, but if they do want relief from that, they would have to propose it based on our, our standards. A few other, other minor issues that you'd be correct related to preliminary site plan, as I said, there are essentially details. We did provide on, on page three and four of our report, some additional comments about sort of direction related to the final site plan. Here we commented on the, the, the paving to some, a little bit greater degree paving of the road. Just give some additional background on that. We did also make some comments about the landscaping. In particular, we noted the need to, to coordinate landscape improvements with snow storage. The, the, the way the parking lots are laid out and the location of the, the detention basin. It's, it's very likely that snow plows will simply plow the snow into the edge of the detention basin. But that is also the location where they, they planted some evergreen trees. And so we recommended some changes on the layout for that to, to prevent conflicts between those two things. All things that are possible, but they may need to move, move the site around a little bit to, to address that. So with that in mind, our recommendation is a recommendation for a, a conditional approval of the preliminary site plan. We're comfortable that, that the details we noted can easily be addressed in the final site plan. So we have included our, our reporter, three conditions. The first one is that is a necessary one, and that is that your action on the preliminary site plan has to be contingent on the board of trustees approving the special use permit. So that's, that's kind of a housekeeping item that's a necessity. The second condition is related to information requirements that were not met, that would need to be met. And then the third condition is essentially addressing our comments related to parking detail, screening, exterior lighting and sidewalk information, which I understand the applicant intends to do on the final site plan. So with that in mind, we're, we're comfortable with, with recommending the site plan move forward with those three conditions.
Okay, thank you Rodney. Questions for Rodney from commissioners? I'll ask the applicants, is, is there anything you'd like to say upfront? That you haven't already said, or you want to remind us of?
Now Rodney did a pretty good job summarizing that. I will echo his comment about our, we're already looking at you know, the reallocation of some of the screening trees, the stormwater detention basin, that all be flushed out the final site plan approval submission, its size, its orientation. We are sensitive to the western boundary, to the agricultural parcel. And I think it was mentioned some overspray of pesticides, insecticides. So we are, we will be addressing that by, we that those buffering trees in kind of a distance, I'm not sure what it's going to be yet, but we'll be sensitive to that concern as well.
Okay. So it is open for comment and question from commissioners. Um, looking at the, I'm just looking at the kind of over, overview here. Remind me again, there is, in the distant future, there is some possibility that a new courthouse might also be built out here, is that right?
That's one of the uses that has been considered for the future. That future, not sure what it is, I don't know that the county even knows when that is, but it's the, it's, I'll say it's the very distant future, it's one of several uses that, that could happen in the future, not sure when though.
Okay, and based on, based on where you've chosen to put this building and its orientation, is the assumption that any major expansion would occur to the south?
Yes.
Parcel?
Correct, yes.
All right. All right, so it is, it is open for questions from commissioners, Commissioner Darren.
This is more of a statement and I just wanted to make a note and bring it to the attention of the other commissioners that even though this was not a developed road going east to 127, there was, there were many times that I saw people exercising on this road. They would run up and down the road as part of their whatever regiment, exercise regiment. And I just think we need to consider that when we're making decisions, maybe in reflection of the sidewalk. Because if we are adding more traffic to this road through granting this, I'm not sure they'll run on the sidewalk. I'm, I'm thinking maybe they may take the road, but I think we should consider it all in the same that people do use this road, even though there are no sidewalks there currently.
Mr. Fuller?
Yeah, I was trying to find in the zoning ordinance, was our dumpster screen wall standard eight foot tall?
It is not.
Okay.
It's six. Six would be the minimum, yeah.
Commissioner Buckley?
I, I think given the previous conversations we've had that on the, on this particular topic, and the relatively silent feedback that we're getting right now, I, I'd like to go ahead with a motion. Just try to keep this moving forward. So I'd like to make a motion to approve PSR, or PSP R 21-2 preliminary site plan from Isabella County for the new Isabella County Jail and Sheriff's Office on approximately 44.5 acres of land. Parts numbers 14-024-10-001-02 and dash 003-00 on the south side of East Remus Road in the northwest quarter of section 24 and in the R2A 102 family zoning district, finding that the May 11th, 2021 site plan can comply with applicable zoning ordinance requirements for preliminary site plan approval, including sections 14.2 point P, according to plan information and 14.2 point S standards for safe plan approval, subject to the following conditions. One preliminary site plan approval is contingent upon board of trustees final approval of the PSUP 2 21-01 special use permit for this project to provide all items required of required information on the final site plan per section 14.2 point P. And three revise all the off-street parking screening, exterior lighting and sidewalk details on the final site plan as necessary for, for compliance with township ordinance requirements.
Okay, so that motion has been made by Buckley, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by lap, commissioner lap? All right, so the motion is to approve the preliminary site plan with conditions, they would make the modifications and they would come back to us with the final site plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Squaterito?
Yes.
Buckley?
Yes.
Ferring?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Aubrey?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
All right, eight, yays, motion approved.
All right, thank you very much. So thanks to you all and we'll look forward to seeing you back. Well, you'll be at the township board, township board first, but if you make it through there, we'll see you back here probably next month, it sounds like.
Thank you, thank you.
So we're ready to move on to item C. This is another special use permit application PSUP 21-02 Crist Filling Station, gas station up on, up on Pickard Road. And so Rodney, do you want to introduce us to this topic?
Thank you, this, as I said, this is for a filling station on the southwest corner of East Picker Road and South Isabella Road. It's a site that currently has an older commercial building on it. The, the proposed location of the filling station also includes the three existing houses that are located to the west of the intersection. So it's a larger site that they're, that they're combining together. The, you have our report dated June the 7th and you have the site plan for this, this project as well in, as part of the packet. The Crist Oil is a company that some may be familiar with. If you, if you've spent time in the upper peninsula, they have a, a large number of stations, more than three dozen up in the UP. They have even more in northern Wisconsin and into Minnesota, but this is something still relatively new for, for the lower peninsula of Michigan, as they are expanding into our area. So here again, just as with the previous one, you have two actions to take public hearing on the special use permit and a recommendation and then a separate consideration of their preliminary site plan. I'm happy to answer any questions as we go along.
Okay, thank you. So we'll follow a similar pattern to what we did with the previous one, which is we'll move through to the public hearing and then we'll move to the consideration of the special use application and then, and then proceed from there. So once again, when we have the public hearing, the purpose is to give members of the public an opportunity to address the commission, to, to give us your opinion, to express your concerns. So we want to give everyone an opportunity to speak. The applicant or applicant's representatives will have their own separate opportunity to address us and stand for questions after that. So when we have the public hearing, we'll again ask people to indicate their desire to speak by hitting their raise hand button and we'll move you over here, give you an opportunity to speak. We'd ask you to give us your name and address for the minutes and limit your comments to three minutes. Once everyone who wants to speak has had an opportunity to speak while the, and while the public hearing is still open, we'll consider recognizing people for additional comments. So the public hearing on special, on the special use permit application 21-02 is open at 8:47. And so I see a phone number ending in 947. And I guess Rodney has brought that person over, so if you can unmute yourself, you're welcome to proceed.
Ask them to mute.
Can you, can you unmute yourself? I don't know how to do it on a phone, I've never called in on one of these.
When I ask them to mute, it should come up with a button to do that.
There we go, yeah, we can hear you, but go ahead and speak up.
Okay, thank you. My name's Joel Foltz and I own the property at 2094 South Isabella, which borders the, some of the southern side of what will be the gas station. And I assume it's a 24-hour gas station and I have no objection to the sale, but I wonder if it would be reasonable to request that the, the company include some sort of sound barrier or fence along at least part of that area, since I do also live on this property. I don't know if that's an unusual request or a fairly common one.
Well, we appreciate your expressing that, that thought and that concern, so. Other comments from you?
No, I guess not.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Go ahead.
No, my only concern is that since I do live here, I know it's, it's already noisy here along Isabella Road, but but if that could somehow be worked into the equation, that would be great for me and hopefully some. And that's all I have. Would it be possible at some point in time to see a sort of a plan of how this gas station is going to be laid out?
Well, you should find, there's a preliminary site plan in the meeting packet, which you can get on the township's website.
Oh, okay, I'll have a look at that.
All right. All right, thank you for your comments. Next one is Rick Anderson. So we'll move him across. And you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
All right, am I up?
We can hear you.
All right, I own the property to the west of the proposed gas station. And I thought that that area was going to be designed for office and medical type deal is, is the zoning commission projected that area to be a filling station or do they really want it to be office buildings? I guess that's my question. So.
Well, we, we appreciate the comment. I mean, this will be part of our deliberations when we get to that point. We normally don't do a back and forth on the, on the public comment, but we appreciate the, the, I mean, your concern is clear, so.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Other comments? Other public comments during the public hearing, other comments during the public hearing? Other public comments during the public hearing, other comments during the public hearing? Going once. Now, there was a there was a written comment on this one too, right? Was that was that from Mr. Anderson or was that from somebody else?
This was from Mr. Anderson, yes.
Okay, um I don't know if you want to read it. I mean, he I think he made his comment orally, but. Unless if it's if it's duplic- if it's if it's basically what he said, I don't know that we need to read it.
I think uh. I I I'll show this part here. It it references with much research. I believe all the neighbors are of the same view. Union Township has a master plan for the area. Especially you seems to be the only plan followed. The last thing we need is another gas station. If you research this company, there are several uh class action suits pending. I know lender landlords who would love to move this this property. I truly believe it's not in the best interest of Union Township.
Okay, thank you. Other public comments before we close the public hearing.
I I I can add one other item. This was not a a written comment, but I did receive a call late this afternoon. Uh from the owner of the Burger King on the opposite corner. Uh who just simply called to express concern about about traffic. Generated by the uh the addition of the the filling station on the property. Uh I did invite him to submit an email for for written comment uh that we could share with you, but he chose he he said he was choosing not to do that.
Okay. Other public comments going going once. Going twice. Alright, well, again, we definitely thank the folks for commenting. Uh both uh here at the meeting and also in in writing and uh and our phone calls. And uh we'll be taking those comments into consideration when we move forward here, so. Uh we'll say that the public hearing is closed at eight fifty four and we thank the public for their comments. So at this point, um we've heard from Rodney, we can um. If there's a representative of the project. We can bring them across if they'd like to talk to us about it and also stand for questions.
I'm bringing across uh Craig Richardson and also uh Mr. Engler. Uh both who are associated with the project.
Okay. If you can. Take our public commenters back to the audience, but.
Can you hear me? I think I'm unmuted.
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh yeah, Craig Richardson here. I'm uh representing Chris Oil and with me in the room here is uh Stan Atanasov. He's the president and owner of the company. As well, um. Your preliminary site plan is uh. You know, proposing a sixty by ninety two foot uh Chris Food Mart, uh small grocery store, convenience store. Um you know, with fuel, canopy island, diesel island. Um looking to have access off East Picker Road, Isabella Road. That's a really good uh location um for this for this type of development. It works real well. Uh the layout size is is adequate for the client to have a successful business here. Um you know, Chris Food Mart, I just let you know, they sell about five thousand different items in their store. Um they get a pretty good selection. Um and they like to offer that here. Um. Yeah, I would like to, I guess, address a couple of the the public comments. Um typical hours of operation. I know we didn't put that in our narrative or anything, but. Typical, it's like six A M, um eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock P M. Um is is typical operation. Um. You know, there they don't have loudspeakers out there at their at their pumps. They don't have uh you know, music playing, that sort of thing. And we get those comments. Quite a bit. I just wanted to mention that. Um you know, as far as is additional traffic generation, I don't foresee. Um you know, traffic coming from great distances here. It's it's usually just the traffic that's going by. I'm on each of the roads, you know, your typical daily traffic. Um. And uh I think that's about. All I have to add or or the you know, addressing the comments there. Anybody has any other questions or comments?
Well, the project will be, as usual, be open for for questions from commissioners to the to the applicant. Um I went to the web. I I have to admit, I haven't been to the U P in a little while and I I hadn't heard of the company before I saw the application. I went to the website and um. It mentions some of them, it mentions uh Sitco. Is there a connection between Chris and Sitco?
No.
Okay.
Chris Oil is independently independently owned and operated.
Okay, I guess I'm trying to get a feel for um. When this, when this, you call it a small grocery. Is it going to be like a small grocery or is it going to be more like? The type of convenience store that you typically find in gas stations, which is primarily uh primarily like the chips and soda and other kind of. Those sorts of snacks.
They do have that, but they have more to offer. Um you know, on the grocery wise, they got milk, eggs. You know, that sort of thing, you know, they have. Yep, they do have some food there, you know, they don't have a, you know, it's not like a place where you would actually dine in type thing or. You know, it's mostly grabbing your food to go. They got hot food they serve there. Yep. They call it. Grocery bread.
Other questions from commissioners?
Oh yeah, I just wanted to mention, I don't know, uh anybody's been up to Charlevoy lately, but they do have two stores in Charlevoy. Um you know, and this would basically have the same look and feel, you know, nice, clean sight. Nice uh attractive store, um you know, good architecture, that sort of thing, so it would look. Just like the Charlevoy stores, they got two of them up there.
I guess I'll I'll since the one fellow mentioned that. Currently, the site, the preliminary site plan does not have any sort of of fence or wall at the south side of the property. Is that correct? I mean, there's some, there's some landscaping. I see there's some trees and so on, but there's no uh like any any sound sort of sound, what what could serve as sound mitigation. Uh like wall, there's nothing like that currently in the plan. Is that correct?
We did not have that shown, no. Um it's not, it's not uncommon. We have. Been required to put up fencing or some other type of screening and and you know, on other sites, that's. That's not a problem if that's required.
Yeah. Alright, so again, reminding people, this is a, this is a special use, so we have the two issues, so we'll. We're we're focusing, we'll focus first on the special use uh request. Um. And um maybe it would be helpful to kind of take stock of that. The the zoning is B seven, is that right?
That's correct.
Which is highway business. And the future land use map is uh is commercial. That whole strip of of uh. Of uh. Uh Pickard is 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 commercial. Um but as you've heard, there's some discussion as to what, you know, what that commercial should look like. Um. Both in the master plan and also we've had those discussions before and it's been raised by by some of the public as well, so. Oops. Oh, sorry, I I was on, I was on attendees and I didn't switch back to panel, so Commissioner Buckley has the sand.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Um you know, I was, I I had been looking through the website. Is there? Um I I think I know the answer, given that I'm at Chris Oil dot com. Uh but are there any examples uh as we deliberate deliberate the special use for a filling station? Are there any examples? Of Chris Food Mart's um operating in the absence of a filling station. Uh. I'm also curious as to, um it appears as though um. Uh most of your locations offer sell liquor and uh and and beer and whatnot beverages. Um is that also the plan for this particular site as well?
Yeah, um mostly in Michigan, it's beer and wine. And then uh. And no, I believe every convenience store does have uh gas pumps. Yeah, they don't operate them independently.
Commissioner Lab.
Is there any plan to allow food, electric charging stations for electric vehicles at the station?
Yes, there can be. We've been uh exploring that and at a minimum. You know, we would definitely have uh. You know, infrastructure in place that would allow for the installation of future charging stations. We're just starting to incorporate that into our plans. Um you know, upon expansions here that we look at, so. That is definitely something we would consider.
We'll we'll be putting in all the electrical underground.
Yep.
Other questions from commissioners? Would you like to uh go down the list? We can do that. Alright, I'm going to take that as a yes. So uh I'll go down, we'll we'll go down the uh the standards for special use approval from the uh from the zoning ordinance. And as usual, chime in if you have a comment. Um proposed land use is identified in section three as a special use in the zoning district and that is true for B seven, so. That one conforms. Uh the location, design, activities, processes, materials, equipment and operational conditions of the special use. Will not be hazardous, detrimental or injurious to the environment or the public health, safety or general welfare by reasons of, and then there's the three or four items. First one is traffic.
I mean, traffic is a concern. That is a very busy corner and I understand burger. The Burger King complain about traffic because they do get stacked up on that corner. But I think it's everybody coming down Isabella going north. And with the Department of Transportation, it looks like they're going to make it go right in, right out only off of twenty. It's going to funnel more traffic down Isabella Road to get into Chris. But like you said, is it going to generate more vehicle traffic? Doubtful. It's probably the traffic that's already on the road.
But I also feel that it's. People trying to access the gas station, probably gas station, depending on which way they're going. Uh just by. The lengths that are identified in the preliminary site plan. It's going to be and out of the gas station unless you're going eastbound or southbound.
I don't believe it's necessarily a a question of the increase of volume of vehicles as much as this question of. Um how the vehicles stack up based on activity and where they're trying to get to uh given the businesses on the other corners.
Other comments on traffic? The next one is noise, vibration, dust, glare or light. Uh the applicant has indicated that they're not planning on having uh. Speakers at the and sound at the pumps. Um. I suppose can and one one could make that a condition. Is that accurate?
Uh yes, absolutely.
And it's.
Go ahead.
Before our facility, so I'm sure the lights won't be on twenty four hours.
Well, yeah, that was going to be my question. If if the if the if the if the. Business is shutting down at eleven or midnight, are are all the canopy lights being turned off or some of those left on for security purposes?
They're they're all turned off.
Okay.
There will be nightlights.
You know, there will be some security lighting basically just on the four sides of the building, but that's, you know, vertical cutoff, lower lighting levels. Just for security purposes, but yeah, the canopy lights will be all shut off during the night. Or green on operating hours.
Other comments on that one, Commissioner Lab?
This isn't really related to lighting, but um are there bike racks expected anywhere on the site? I would anticipate that you would get kids coming with bikes. Uh these times.
Yeah, we we have been uh putting them on when required and I think that was a comment in the preliminary site plan report. I think I mentioned in there. I did. I did read that, but that is not a problem if. You gotta put bike racks in, but that's not an issue.
Uh let's see, next item, uh again, similar, you know, same idea. Uh will not be hazardous, detrimental or injurious to the environment or the public health, et cetera. By reason of odors, dust, drainage, pollution or other adverse impacts. I mean, a gas station, but to me, to me, putting putting thousands of gallons of hydrocarbons. Down underneath the surface of is is is. By nature hazardous, but I know there are regulations and and you know uh that the. State watches that pretty closely, so it's wouldn't be, wouldn't be any different from any other gas station, I guess, is the point. Other comments or questions on that one? Okay, the next one, uh the special use will be designed, constructed, operated and maintained in a manner compatible. With adjacent uses, the surrounding area and the intent of the zoning district. Where determined necessary by the planning commission or township board, the applicant has provided. Adequately for any restrictions on hours or days of operation, minimization of noise. And screening improvements or other land use buffers to ensure land use compatibility and minimize adverse impacts. So I guess maybe take these, break that into two parts. Is it uh is it compatible with adjacent uses, the surrounding area and the intent of the zoning district?
Yes.
I heard a yes and he knows.
It seems like if the buffer, if there's buffers provided, especially along the south end where there's residential um. Property on the side, that would certainly help with the. To minimize the adverse impacts.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's some, you know. I mean, I kind of got the impression in reading some of the uh you know, the staff report as well as. Uh you know, the public comment touched on this as well. I mean, I think everybody. You know, kind of hopes that 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 main entryway into the township from the east is going to. You know, have, you know, all kind of high end businesses and and be a kind of a, you know. A place that justifies the hanging petunias and such, but um I think that. You know, we're always in this position of of, you know, we don't get to choose which businesses go where. I think that, you know, we're always in this position of, you know, we don't get to choose which businesses go where the businesses come to us and present themselves as as proposals. And then you have to decide, you know, is it, is it worth saying no? Because you think that that it doesn't, you know, doesn't merit being in that area? Or do you, or do you let the businesses more or less, you know, fill in as they, as they, you know, come to us? There certainly are doctors offices on that Pickard Strip in different areas, but this is not what the proposal that's in front of us here. Other comments? And then the second part of that, go ahead, somebody? The second part of that was about providing adequately for restrictions. They've indicated that they don't intend to be a twenty four hour. There's been some discussion about, you know, possibly some sort of wall on the south side between the business and the adjacent residential properties.
Yep. Yeah, that that's something that we can incorporate into our plan.
Other comments from commissioners? Next item, the special use location and character is consistent with the general principles, goals, objectives and policies of the adopted master plan. So again, the master plan, the land use, future land use map marks that as community commercial, which is kind of that broad umbrella of commercial operations at busy kind of intersections of the township. There's some of that up on Pickard, there's some of it at the corner of Lincoln and Remus. Few other locations where that occurs.
Not sure that I can say that I think that this is what the master plan envisions, but I would also have to admit that I don't believe the master plan prohibits this use as well. In in terms of this particular zoning.
Other comments from commissioners? The proposed special use conforms to all applicable requirements or standards of this ordinance or other township ordinances. And of course, that depends in part on a final site plan. Approval of the special use location will not result in a small residential or non residential area being substantially surrounded by incompatible uses. Again, it's smack in the middle of a B seven zone, so doesn't seem like that's going to be the case. The impact of the special use will not exceed existing planned capacity of public or municipal services or infrastructure, including but not sorry, including but not limited to, again, there are several. First one is fire protection services and municipal water and sewerage. Relatively small operation. The grand scheme of things. Roads, east protection services, refuse disposal of the utilities, drainage and public or private wells. And finally, the proposed use will not create additional requirements at public cost for services or infrastructure that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community.
Yes, my only point to this. Yeah, as much as I'd like to see that corner developed, I'm not sure a gas station is what we need. That stretch, we have five gas stations at Pickard as it is. But then when I hear about the store, I'm concerned that's going to affect the party store just down the street from it. And we're not trying to build competition into these developments. But is it, is it what we need as a community is another gas station, party store on that corner? I'm not worried about the gas station owners. I'm more worried about traffic because we have a huge problem with traffic in this community. I still feel that it's going to be a safety traffic concern with the proposed driveways. And I'm not sure how it's going to affect, not necessarily the gas station kitty corner, but the small party store down the street. Now we've just added another party store in the area. And I think we have an abundance. We have enough already. That's my concern.
Okay, Commissioner Buckley?
Generally speaking, I tend to echo Commissioner Darren's comments here with the exception that I I don't believe that the planning commission is tasked with concerning itself as to what type of competition it creates among private businesses. You know, normal functioning economic climate competition is healthy and it's it's up to the individual businesses themselves to decide how they operate and whether or not they thrive or survive. Setting that aside, though, I would say that I I do question the the need for a filling station at this location. I question, I do have concerns about the traffic flow and the traffic patterns in an area that's already fairly congested and I I I question overall, I know that it's not necessarily worded the same way. With our current special use guidelines, but in a previous special use guidelines that we had formerly used, there was, it spoke to the effect of the overall good for the community. By my tally, I I believe we have about twenty to twenty one filling stations within Mount Pleasant in the immediate vicinity right now, and we have, I know Sam's Club and I I believe Duncan both has filling as well. So we're going to be up to two dozen filling stations within a very tight radius. In a relatively small community at a at a time when fuel consumption in general is in a long term structural decline. So I I do believe that the planning commission has an opportunity to be patient. Should it choose to do so in terms of how it issues a special use and whether or not this is the appropriate business that we're looking for in this corner? So I, I do have some reservations here.
Okay. Commissioner Laub?
I would agree with Commissioner Buckley and Commissioner Darren.
Other comments from other commissioners? Not a commissioner, but we'll recognize Rodney.
Just just a quick comment. I just make a note that while this is a filling station, and obviously they're providing gasoline. They are providing a service that is not available in many stations. That is a full diesel pump setup, especially in a format that would allow for for a larger vehicle such as a truck and RV kind of combination to be able to get in and get out comfortably. That that is a service that is not generally available. And so it is somewhat unique to the site and to a very limited number of other sites in the community.
Yeah, can we comment on that?
Um, I'll I'll recognize the applicant for a brief comment.
What we're going to put in in that location is no, all your new pickup trucks and trucks, small vehicles that are diesel, got to have depth. That's an additive so that for the environment, we're going to put in a tank and a pump for that. So you don't have to buy a gallon and put it in when you get diesel fuel. And it's really, really public really likes that because they don't get dirty and in the winter time, it's a heated pump and it's something new and it really works. So I just want to add this speeding and and our prices are right. We'll save the people a lot of money in the area. Nobody undersells us and tax base there will be very, very substantial.
Okay, thank you.
Wish you would Google Charlevoy. We have two stars there and the people just love us. And we're building two stores in Petoskey and they they want us there. They're going to relax all zoning laws and we're building a new one in in Mount Big Rapids, right downtown. We bought two restaurants and hosts. And a city council just wants us there. And we're building a new store in Cadillac. We're starting construction in September and October. And we're heading to lower Michigan. And we're company is very well. So we're a first class company and we run a first class operation. We don't very clean and very attractive and they want us in areas where we're at. We have seventy eight stores. We just built one in Rothschild, Wisconsin. And we just opened one up in Dupire, Wisconsin, two weeks ago. Last Friday.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the comments. Commissioner Buckley?
Yeah, I'd just like to add to Rodney's point, I think that does actually, I appreciate the perspective. I think it does actually feed into my concern about access to the the potential congestion problems that can result from a filling station here if we're talking about larger trucks or the diesel vehicles seeking that out of a potential location. Admittedly, in this day and age, everybody on their phone has a, can search for gas stations anywhere in the immediate or regional vicinity. And so it's not hard to seek out the types of pumps or the types of fuels that they want. Particularly the prices that they want, but if we're talking about creating a situation that has has diesel at a location that might drive additional large vehicles to that location, that's it's not going to simplify the traffic congestion. I think it's only going to make it worse.
Other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Fuller?
Yeah, on what Ryan says, if you're a fleet commercial trucking company pulling in there to get diesel, that does make exiting and entering that facility even more difficult on those already congested roads.
Other questions from commissioners? So we can have a motion? This is again, a recommendation to the township board. You have a variety of of possibilities.
I'll make a motion to recommend denial to the to the township board of trustees to deny P S U P dash O two special application for the new Crest Oil Filling Station on approximately two point six acres of land on the southwest corner of East Pickard Road and South Isabella Road in the northeast quarter of section fourteen in the B seven retail and service highway business zoning district. Finding that it does not comply with sections fourteen point three point J standards of special use approval the following reasons, and I'm going to state the traffic concerns, safety being the majority of the concern.
So the motion was made by Commissioner Darren. Is there a second to that motion?
If before we, before we have a second.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to give an opportunity to add other reasons, but I guess we can do that or we can, all right, let's. Was that what your point you were going to make?
Well, what I was going to suggest is perhaps to consider this. Perhaps to consider developing a motion that simply lists the findings of fact that you feel are relevant to the to the matter. And then it may, that might even be a a motion of its own. Rather, simply because that way we 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 get a a firm and complete list of of what those are. The other element is you, this may be one to consider simply postponing the action for this evening. So that you have time to look at this individually and come back at your next meeting with with your own, with a kind of a full set of reasons that you could, you could come together with to to proceed. If you're, if you're going to recommend denial, I strongly recommend that that we identify every single reason that that you feel is not appropriate. It's very, be very specific. Traffic concerns is not specific. And and that you tie it back to the specific standard to which they have not met. So that so that we end up with a motion that is as as strongly defensible as possible. And that that can be something where it's completely reasonable for you to postpone actions tonight to begin to build that essentially and and then take it up at your next meeting.
All right. Well, let me ask, let me ask this. Those of you who've spoken and expressed concerns. Well, what would the, what are the, what are the concerns? Give voice to them. How would you, how would you, if you were stating it to the township board, how would you state it?
Would state it based on two sub A. The traffic concerns, the safety traffic concerns are my reasoning for suggesting denial for this proposal. And I'm open to listen to other commissioners, but that one alone stands out to me.
You need to be specific on what that concern is, what what's driving that and how it the only reason I say this because the more specific you are, the more defensible your recommendation becomes. Because anytime we're recommending denial, if this, if this is denied, there is always that possibility. We end up in front of a judge. And so we want to have the strongest possible support behind it. So the more specific it can be about why traffic is a concern. What elements or what specific relate conditions are in that area or on that site. The more specific they are, the better. And that's why taking time to build this, even if it takes another meeting would be better for, especially for a recommendation.
Commissioner Buckley?
My clarification on traffic concerns would be that due to the nature of the existing businesses and the traffic patterns at that particular site. There is concern about accessibility into and out of a filling station in a in a manner that does not create unnecessary congestion or works against the flow of traffic and potential pedestrian foot traffic crossing those intersections at that location. I would add that I have an additional concern about its conformance with our master plan. And even though our master fan plan based on zoning does allow for this type of business as a special use, I'm not convinced that this special use in this location meets our master planning vision for the location. And my third concern on this would be, as I mentioned before, and I do believe that the planning commission has some leeway on this, is that I question the need for an additional filling station in within a township that has unless unless there's evidence presented. Um unless unless there's evidence presented to me otherwise has a sufficient number of filling stations at a time. Uh when most experts would say that we've already reached peak gasoline consumption. Um and so uh those would be three of my top concerns at that point. Whether or not we postpone this to an additional. Meeting, I guess I'm open for discussion on that, but my concerns extend beyond just uh the the immediate. A traffic congestion and safety concern concerns that would result from that.
Okay. Other other uh Commissioner Shingles.
Yeah, I just wanted to um to add that earlier, we were talking about the number of uh. Gas stations on Pickard and the potential unfair competition. Uh that's been recorded and probably documented within our, although uh we backed off of that. Um to Rodney's point, I think the opportunity to deliberate on this and to come up with compelling. Um and complete, we I think we got framework, uh but I don't know if it. Passes all of the tests, the the standards of of um. Um all of the considerations, especially to Rodney's point about uh ending up in court, so um. I I don't know if there's a reason to to rush to a decision tonight. Um as opposed to going back and carefully crafting a justification for denial.
I will withdraw my proposal.
Okay, I don't think it had been seconded yet, is that right? Right, I think that's right, okay. The only thing I will say is uh. These things don't, these things don't write themselves. And so those of you who who have the how who have these concerns. I really suggest you think about this over the next month. So that when we come back, we're not just, you know, starting from square one and, you know, spend another hour plus, you know, going back and forth, I think that, you know. It. I I think that the additional time is all well and good if it's used constructively, so uh you know, go back to the master plan, go back to the zoning ordinance, go back to, you know. Whatever and and, you know, maybe do a little research or whatever, but give some thought to it so that when we do come back, people are ready to to kind of pounce on this and and, you know, if that's your pleasure, right?
So what 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 we will do as with uh staff, uh I did, I did make take a lot of notes, uh as these things were being discussed, these concerns. I also made note of where Mr. Buckley's comments were because I I didn't get everything down that he said. And what we'll do is we will try to. Uh but but basically, you know, you have a draft set of motions in your packet, what we'll do is we'll update that draft set of motions to incorporate these findings as uh as best we can. Uh from the comments that have been made uh into that list, so you'll have a starting point to work from from there. And then obviously you can add to it or do whatever you like with it, but we'll we'll give you an updated set of draft motions uh that will will uh bring these bring this discussion into that.
Okay, so um so then um. So then we would have a motion to postpone, correct?
That is correct.
Alright, so if there's anybody who is so moved, uh there is a motion to postpone action that you can make at this time.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Motion postpone action on the P S U P twenty one dash zero two special use permit. Application for the new Chris oil filling station on the southwest corner of East Chris Pickard Road and South Isabella Road until um. What is it, and until the next regularly scheduled uh planning commission meeting.
That that would be the.
July twentieth, is that right?
Yeah, July twentieth meeting.
Uh so we can add that July twentieth meeting.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
So the motion was by Buckley to postpone action on uh the special use permit application. And the second was by Commissioner Lap, further discussion. Uh Commissioner Fuller.
Yeah, I just, traffic is a concern of mine, but I don't know how this parcel remedies that. For any future this development or any future development, here this project is taking up. You know, three hundred and twenty-one foot of that corner and moving the driveway all the way to the west. I mean, they've done what they could to mitigate traffic, and I'm not sure. How? The development mitigates the traffic concern on this corner. I mean, a fueling station wants to be by traffic, by as much traffic as possible. I'm just. I'm just torn with the the traffic concern through there.
Okay, um. Commissioner Buckley, did you have your hand up?
Um yeah, and I and I will say to Commissioner Fuller's point tonight, and I won't belabor this anymore. Um outside of to point out that I I do believe there are developments that can be. Um they can go in here, the you know, each each type of business has a certain volume of customer volume of traffic that they're going to generate. Uh obviously with fueling stations being at the higher end of that spectrum and certainly plenty of other businesses, it would be the lower end of the spectrum depending on the type of customer and merchandise sold. Uh but generally speaking, I I after all this conversation, I I for my own piece of mind and for the sake of the applicant, I'd like to make the point that. Um the conversation here today is has, in my mind, has nothing to do with the the quality of the applicant, the quality of the application or anything along. About those lines, I think it's important to point out that this is really more of a conversation from my perspective. Um about what we envision for this space and how we want to make use of our special use uh process uh here, and it's it's not necessarily take anything away from the. The quality of the business, quality of the uh applicant in and of itself or anything like that, so I. Uh I I I feel the need to say that, I I would assume that the rest of the commissioners would echo that sentiment as well.
Okay, thank you. Other comments. Alright, so the motion is to postpone action until uh the July meeting, regular meeting, July twentieth. Uh I guess we'll do a roll call on this.
Fuller?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Aubrey?
Yes.
Buckley?
Yes.
Bearing?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Squatito?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Okay, thank you. So then I'm also assuming that uh. We would probably postpone action on the uh site plan review.
That's that would be recommended, yes.
Okay, would anyone like to make the motion to postpone action on the. Preliminary site plan application twenty one dash fifteen.
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry, do we need to, I I can't just, I'm gonna read it. I can read it, one second, let me pull that back up.
Uh I I and I would recommend using the same July twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting date, rather than the. August date that was in the recommended motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to um. I'll make a motion to postpone action. On P S P R twenty one dash fifteen preliminary site plan. For the new Chris oil filling station on approximately two point six acres of land on the southwest corner of East Pickard Road and South Isabella Road. Until uh July twentieth, twenty twenty-one for the following reasons. Um. Uh and I I rather than these two conditions, which I don't think are necessarily. Applicable in in this particular, given what's transpired, I would say that the the condition would be that we are uh awaiting a final uh recommendation by the planning commission uh on the special use permit.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Buckley to. Postpone consideration of the uh preliminary site plan because we haven't reached a a recommendation on the on the special use permit, is there a second? Second by Shingles. Further discussion. Alright, uh roll call please.
Bearing?
Yes.
Squatito?
Yes.
Buckley?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Aubrey?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
Alright, thank you. Okay, uh so yeah, so. Folks will work on that behind the scenes and we'll come back to it in July. So that. That moves us through C and D, so the next item is another. Uh this is a combined preliminary and final site plan application. It's P S P R twenty one dash thirteen. This is uh the uh east fifty fifty forty-eight to fifty eighty-two East Pickard Road, uh Dollar General Retail Store. And so uh it's not a not a public hearing, but uh if there are folks here for that project, we'll bring them across. And proceed with that.
Alright, uh just while we bring them uh across, I can I can uh make a few preliminary introductory comments, uh you have a report dated June the seventh. And the site plan dated May the twenty-first in your packet, uh this is for Dollar General uh retail store, a new uh location. Uh. A couple of things of in 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 your in your electronic packet, uh we did include one additional sheet. Uh and I wanted to make sure to clarify this, uh it's not in your paper set. Uh it is an example of a uh a. Uh building facade for Dollar General store that is elsewhere in the region. Uh in your in your paper packet, it is uh. What page is it, I can't see the page number right offhand, but it's it's in the electronic packet, it's it's right before the the proposed building elevations. Uh and the reason we included it, it's labeled in there, bright blue letters notes that it's an example. Uh we have kind of made comments in our report about the. The character of the of the facade and its relationship to uh their surrounding residents and and also the relationship to the to the East DDA District, and I'm happy to. Answer questions about that, we included quite a bit of information about the East DDA District, this is part of our Downtown Development Authority. Uh where the township spends a great deal of resources every year and has put in a substantial amount of public infrastructure. Uh the example uh facade uh sketches are for Dollar General, it's a standard plan as I understand it. Uh that uh that would meet the the uh comments that were noted in here. Uh including the requirement for screening of the rooftop equipment, which their proposed plan does not have. And also providing for consistent facade on all four sides of the building, this site is visible uh from front and back, uh so, you know, the. The the fact that it ought to have consistency on all four sides uh is a reasonable one. But I did want to make clear that the facade in the the additional sheet in the in the electronic set was inserted by me, uh just to provide you with an example. Uh of another Dollar General site and how it looks. Uh the other comment I'll make is that the applicant on the site plan on the cover sheet, uh you'll you can see. Uh to the to the rear of the of the uh the building, there's a shaded area. That extends from from uh from Florence Street on the on the right-hand side over to the back corner of the Burger King uh property on on the other on the west side. Uh and it's noted an area to be donated to the township. Um the reason this was was included this way is that there is a requirement in the ordinance uh related to the to the M twenty corridor, the East Pickard Road corridor. Uh that that the businesses provide for internal cross-access so that you can you can move from one side to the other. Uh so the vehicles can move from one side to the other without going out onto the main uh state highway. This is in part intended to reduce traffic congestion, reduce uh conflicts and 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 accidents. Uh at this particular site, uh we had a meeting with the uh the owner of the Burger King uh to discuss. You know, uh creating a cross-access between the between the two sites there, and the Burger King owner was absolutely adamantly against it. Uh we can't compel him to to uh to permit to allow that cross-access, we 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 can require the Dollar General site as a new development. To provide it, but we can't compel the Burger King to accept it. Uh and so we were looking at how do how can they meet the the intent of the ordinance without, you know, having access to the Burger King property. And so that's what led them to propose the idea of this donation that would be donated to the uh East DDA District. And our Economic Development Authority Board with the idea that they could at some future date. Uh create that cross-access. Uh I tell you all that to tell you that the the Economic Development Authority Board met this eve this afternoon before our meeting. And I did bring this this site plan to them uh in this this concept, this idea. Uh and the the E D A Board uh was specific in in their determination that that uh they're not interested in accepting the donation. Uh so at this point, that is the 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 donation option is is not a viable one because uh the E D A is not interested in it. So with that in mind, the the applicant will need to provide for cross-access, they can they can meet the requirement of the ordinance by providing a a secondary driveway that would go to Florence Street. And so that would be something that they would have to address in their fin- on their final site plan. Uh so that that is a change from from uh what existed during when we wrote this report on June the seventh. Uh with that in mind, I'm uh happy to answer any questions as we go along and and we have Scott Knowlton uh and and Scott Jaws, we act both with us and. I've asked them both to. To start their video.
Okay, questions for Rodney at this point before we.
Rodney, could you please?
The applicants.
Could you please invite Peter Ouzuk and Jared Dvorsky as well, both with Westwind Construction? Will do, thank you.
Obviously, that DDA meeting had a little wrinkle in our whole uh whole plan, and I think we're all kind of pleasantly uh. Uh optimistic on that idea that this would be a us uh something that would not only serve um serve that need, but would serve all the adjacent properties and and provide that conduit, so that'll be interesting. Did, yeah, but.
Um Ryan, do you have your hand up?
No, okay. Yes, I did, um I was just curious, uh my original question was to Rodney and to see if there was any justification. From the E D A as to why they were not interested in accepting that donation or if there was no justification provided.
Well, the the issue is really that that uh the A D A E D A would end up with property that they have to maintain with no likelihood, no no uh. No short-term or medium-term likelihood of being able to actually uh construct anything in that area, uh since Burger King. You know, it's not a situation where they have any interest in it, uh the Burger King owner indicated that that uh there would be a, there's a long-term plan for potentially making. Improvements to his facility as the fast food restaurants occasionally do where they, you know, uh essentially replace the facility. But that action is many, many years away. Uh and and so in that circumstance, the the E D A Board indicated they're not interested in. Uh dealing with the maintenance costs that would be involved. Uh as I said, without a a clear path to success for actually building something that would that would be beneficial to to a number of properties in that area. So that that was essentially where they were uh in that that, you know, that's uh that's why they chose not to accept it at this point.
Thank you, Rodney.
Okay, um so our our applicants are with us, and so I will open it up to. To you all, if there's anything you'd like to say upfront about the project, and then uh you'll stand for questions, I assume.
Sure. Um, again, my name is Scott Joswiak, I'm the project engineer on this. Uh, I was originally involved with the, uh, underlying property owners during the rezoning request and that morphed into, um, finalizing this project with, uh, Midwest Five. So Scott Knowlton, Peter Olazuk and Jared Dvorsky are all on this, uh, with us today and they're, they're part of the development crew. And, um, uh, we are proposing a, a ten thousand six hundred square foot, uh, Dollar General store, um, and, uh, retail store. It's gonna, um, provide thirty-five parking spaces. All our stormwater may is handled on-site. Uh, we're working through, uh, the Drain Commissioner on, on a drain issue, uh, which, uh, we feel are pretty close on. And, um, getting through the Fire Department reviews, uh, so far we've had, um, very minor, uh, reviews come back from various agencies, uh, DPW needing some details and so forth, but, um, uh, overall, it's a, a pretty straightforward retail store and, um, we're, we've, we've got our building plans that we're proposing and, uh, we're trying to just, meet your expectations the best we can, uh, staying within the limits of, uh, and, and focusing on the ordinance requirements and, uh, you know, providing as good an opportunity for improvements to the facade as we can. Uh, budget is a concern and, um, trying to stay within the, within what our requirements are, so. I don't know that it really, I have too much to add, but I, I do feel that the, uh, you know, we, we've been over with the, uh, cross-connection issue. We don't really know which way to go with that. So, uh, we'll be looking to either the planning commissioner staff to help advise as to what we're going to be doing. Um, my recommendation is not to punch something up the Florence Street, um, at this time. If it's not going to connect with anybody. And that was kind of the whole premise behind uh, deeding off that property that that, at that time, if the party store, uh, the, or whatever else, uh, we're all going to be subject to the same ordinance. They're not going to have this opportunity, uh, like we do. So, uh, we felt that, you know, as far as, uh, opportunity for the DDA or township, however that might work, um, would be the best avenue for, for getting all of this to come together. Um, so that's unfortunate, um, but, uh, um, you know, I guess we're looking to see how we proceed from here.
Okay. Um. Well, let's take the, the building facade issue. Um. Based on, based on what, uh, your conversations with, with, uh, township staff, do you think their suggestions are things you can incorporate into the plan or do you think it's too expensive?
We've, we've started to adapt to some of them. Um, we've begun to look at screening options for the mechanical equipment up above. Uh, it doesn't necessarily require us to build a parapet wall all the way around all four sides of the building. Uh, there are other ways to screen it. Um, you know, more closer to where the equipment actually is. Uh, we did include a parapet wall across the front. And, um, you know, for, for what view lines and stuff we do have, we feel that this, uh, you know, i- is a different store than what we're used to for sure, from a facade standpoint. So, um, dollars and cents. You know, just like what the sheriff's was talking about, you know, those all play a factor in, in what we can do. Um, so, uh, you, you can do a lot, but then all of a sudden the project doesn't make sense and you just kind of, you know, go away. So we're, we're trying to stay within the ordinance. Uh, we've reviewed the master plan and adapted to as many of those elements as we possibly could. Um, and we're trying to just juggle those, those, uh, those economic issues, uh, relative to the master plan items and staying true to what the ordinance is requiring. So in the ordinance, it does require us to have some screening around the mechanical equipment. And we are working on that, so.
What, if I, if I may, one, one comment I'd like to make about the screening, that, what, what, uh, he's talking about as an alternative would essentially be putting fencing around the each individual, uh, rooftop unit. That's, that, that's not the type of screening we're talking about here. The, the screening is both to screen visually, which I suppose a fence does that. But, but it's also the screen noise, uh, related to, uh, so it doesn't, you know, impact the surrounding residents. Uh, this, this equipment is on the roof. It is, it is, uh, directly in line with the adjacent residences. That's the reason why a parapet wall is the appropriate type of screening to use. Uh, because it will, it will screen the, the sound as well as screen visually. Uh, and as I said, the, the Dollar General has a standard plan that employs a, a parapet wall. This is not anything special. Uh, and employs it out of all four sides, provide the exact screening that's needed. So I, I, I will say this, that screening individual units would not meet the requirement of the ordinance related to, uh, relationship with the adjacent residences.
The, the, um, screening requirement is in the landscape section of the ordinance, isn't it, Rodney?
The screening requirement is in the zoning ordinance, the relationship. Yeah, I tell you what, I, uh, Mr. Chair, in, in light of the hour, my suggestion is, is that this may be something that, that we need to have a, uh, another meeting with the applicant, but, uh, just to try to work these details out as best as possible. It may be best to simply postpone action on this item and, and allow staff to have a, have a conversation. It, it can go over these items in detail, uh, and see if we can come to some conclude, con- conclusions that can be brought back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Peter Olazuk here, I'm, uh, the part of the development crew. I think we would appreciate feedback from the planning commission that will overall be the governing body uh, for the recommendation, for the approval to also provide feedback. So we can make sure that we kind of check all the boxes in regards to the expectations. Um, because we've, we've continued to have communications and we'd like to have expanded communications here ago, the preliminary site plan, so we can get feedback. Uh, and ideally be able to have a collective, but also, uh, bring the attention to the sensitivity of construction costs. Um, you know, Scott and I have developed three hundred of these across multiple states. And what, uh, what was presented is not what you would deem a standard prototype. Uh, and we would like to at least have considerations for opportunities to provide, provide something that's aesthetically pleasing, but also financially viable, uh, for the development of what is currently a vacant piece of property, uh, and really is a non-operating a piece of real estate along the stretch.
Uh, and I would add to that if I may, um, I would like the, the planning commission's feedback on the access, um, uh, conundrum at this point because hypothetically, our, our strong preference is that we talk about it for a bit, get some feedback, get preliminary approval to move up forward, uh, knowing that we're not getting final site plan approval or anything like that. But I'd like some, a little bit of feedback and I, I guess what I'm trying to avoid is we postpone for another meeting. We do our darnedest to, to satisfy staff and, 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 um, explicitly comply with the portions of, of the ordinance that we can, that we're required to, to comply with, but then not having, have received feedback on the access. It could be all be moved. And I guess I'd really like to avoid that.
Yeah, fa- fair enough. Um. You know, we just hit ten o'clock here, but ten, you know, it's not midnight, so, um, yeah, no, I, I, we can spend a, a few minutes here, at least, uh, giving commissioners a chance to, to react to some of these issues. Um, uh, because it's, it's a valid point. We don't want them to come back in a month and then, to then tell them, you know, it doesn't fly with us. Um. Uh, let me come back one more time to the, to the, just the building itself. If I'm understanding Rodney correctly, he's, he says that there is a, a, a Dollar General store that, that you guys or that people build that, uh, would, would satisfy to their, in their way of thinking anyway, the, the spirit of our, of our, uh, you know, our ordinance and our master plan and so on. Are you saying that that's not true or are you just saying it's a more expensive version that you're not so interested in?
I don't, I don't know that we're able to answer that with, with full certainty. I mean, we, we, we didn't build that building. We didn't price that building. We can't sit here today and say, we can go build it. Of course, we could, we could accomplish the building, the constructing of that building, but we're not. But we don't have enough information to say that we can go build that building and have the budget for the project work, um, because we didn't do it. So, and, and I, I gotta echo, echo Peter that it's not a, that prototypical building. Um, for Dollar General.
Uh, it would be deemed a, a one-off is what the terminology would be for something like that.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've done hundreds of these and there's, you know, there's prototypical layouts that are given to us by Dollar General, but, um, each building is different in, you know, different types of, of construction materials, et cetera. So we're just not qualified to know. Yes, that building is completely buildable, but we don't know if we can build it here.
Okay. All right, um. And then with regard to the, uh, the, the cross-through. Tell me again, Rodney, which? So what are the options in terms of fulfilling the, the, the ordinance based on what they currently have?
So it's. In, in this case, uh, because they have access to Florence Street, uh, simply providing a secondary driveway that, that, uh, connected with Florence Street would satisfy the access management provisions, the ordinance, uh, governing the M twenty corridor. So they, uh, they can meet that standard. That, that really is the only other practical, uh, way to go. The, uh, uh, the, the, uh, the adjacent properties to, to the east, you know, the party store, the arrangement of the party store makes a cross-connection there impossible. Uh, and the other property is a small house that's non-conforming. It's a non-conforming use, uh, in that business district. So, uh, the best solution is simply to put a secondary driveway, uh, over to Florence Street.
Down around south of the house.
Exactly.
Yeah. And if, and if, and if that's deemed undesirable for what, for whatever reason, then we're kind of stuck or why?
Well, the, the, the applicant would, would have to essentially seek a variance from the standard, uh, related access management that, uh, come, they'll come to play here. Uh, if they wish to do something different.
Okay. All right. Well, it's open commissioners. I'm, I'm not the only one here, obviously. So if you guys have, uh, thoughts on either of these topics or any other topic related to, or if you have questions on the, on the proposal, now's the time to speak up. Uh, Commissioner Buckley?
I, I'd have to say that, um, from where I stand and, and from the feedback that Rodney's given to the documentation that we've been provided, I, uh, generally speaking, uh, I, I would be broadly in agreement with the type of feedback that Rodney's provided. Uh, I would also, uh, generally support, uh, the idea of, uh, I think you guys have known in the, in the past, I do support access management. And so, uh, if the only option is to, uh, shoot out under the street there, then I would certainly, um, support that a- as well. So i- if the, if the applicant is looking for some feedback and some direction from, uh, the planning commission, at, at least I for one, um, I, I, I'm in general agreement with what I'm seeing on the page and what, what's been provided, the report to us from Rodney. So, uh, if that's helpful, great. If, if they have more questions, I'm certainly happy to speak to anything.
Right.
Ju- just to be care, to clear, uh, Mr. Chair and also, Mr. Buckley, um, knowing full well that, you know, if the desire is to try to create the cross-access to Florence, um, the encouragement as of the time being, I know Rodney, I believe you'd mentioned in the past, kind of the hope to try to avoid that just for the residential kind of nature for what it is across, as long as everybody understands that to fall in compliance for that kind of that through traffic, that that would be something that we can work towards. We can work towards that level of, I guess, interconnectivity to the side street as well, from our main access point onto Pickard to Florence as well, then we can certainly work to try to accommodate that.
It would certainly be more optimal to be, uh, connecting with Burger King. I, I, I would agree, but I, uh, I think that I would prefer not to abandon a good solution in the absence of a perfect solution.
Well, I think as Rodney kind of mentioned, we, it was a long conversation, but it was not a very uh, overall productive conversation when it comes to just their overall traffic management on their internal operations. So I can't fault them for not wanting to change anything when they've seemed to have a pretty good machine running right next door, so. Um, if, just for my sake, is there the opportunity to look at some? Uh, obviously I know what Rodney had shared in regards to the one-off store. I believe Rodney, that was in Bay City, correct? Is where that kind of been located, correct?
It's in Bay County. It's not in Bay City itself, but in Bay.
Okay, Bay County. Um. There might be some better options that I can certainly dig into that might be more, um. I, I guess, obviously being sensitive to obviously relative construction costs in regards to a project like this. Um, would the commission be open to seeing something that's more of kind of a, kind of a pitched roof or like a, like a residential shingle or something like that, that creates a little bit different aesthetic look to be able to try to accommodate. It might even be a different construction practice altogether, um, depending on the opportunity to try to work under the framework.
That's a hard question to answer. I mean, I don't know. Uh. I don't know offhand. I mean, it probably would depend on what it would end up looking like. I mean, drawings, drawings, drawings are probably not hard to generate. So I mean, you know, you, if you have ideas, I think we would definitely be interested in, in looking at them. I think, I guess what I would say is, you know, the, the plan you've presented, the majority of it is, is what I describe, and I apologize if it's the wrong term, but, you know, kind of a corrugated metal building. There's, there's some, a, a, a strip of either brick or, or faux-brick in the front. There's a, a, a strip of, of stone or faux-stone along the bottom, but it's basically a, uh, a largely corrugated metal building. And I think the feeling is, you know, on that, on that strip, we, we aspire to something a little bit, uh, a little bit nicer than that, if it's possible. So, um, but you know, if, if you have ideas that would take it in a completely different direction, I, I wouldn't close the door to it. I just wouldn't know from, until I've seen it, whether it's.
Fair enough, Mr. Chairman. Uh, would it be something is, obviously is, is metal the issue or is it more just the breakup of the space of the wall assembly?
Well. I used to be able to say it's just metal, but I can't after last month, but, um, I think I. It's late, so I don't want to say the wrong thing, but I, I think it's fair. I think it would be fair to say that a Dollar General store is kind of, I mean, you know, it's, it's a discount store. It's, it looks like a discount store, you know, how much can you dress it up? Um, the, the metal, you know, we did approve a building last month that's primarily metal, but it's very modern looking in its, in its metalness. Whereas this is to me very kind of traditional looking in its metalness. So I, I wouldn't say it, it, you know, metal couldn't work, but I think that just what I'm seeing on the elevations, you know, I guess to me, it, it probably looks very much like the, the Dollar General that we already have on Remus, except it's probably got a little more uh, of the, of the faux-brick on the front.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, Commissioner Lap?
I apologize. I missed a little bit of this meeting, or a little bit of this discussion, but, um, I thought the issue really was the roof issue to, um, buffer some of the sound. I thought that was the main issue with the external part of the building.
It's that and the, and the.
And the look of it, okay.
The look of it.
Okay.
Anybody else have comments? I don't want to cut this off. We do have one other agenda item, so, uh, but I want to give, make sure that we give them, you know, proper feedback.
I think I would, with the entry of the road and the, and the, the gen, the, the general feedback on the aesthetics of the building, we probably have enough that if, if we were to receive tonight a preliminary approval, we could, we could figure out whether or not we can, uh, uh, accomplish something that is more aesthetically pleasing with, within the confines of our budget and, um, and, and come back to you guys. And, and come back to you guys.
And so with regard to the road, you're, you're also assuming you'll put in the.
Yes, sir.
To, so what's, what's the pleasure of my fellow commissioners here? He's, he's asking for a preliminary approval of the. Or approval of the preliminary, uh, plan. That's an option for us. We can postpone the whole thing. We can. We can approve the preliminary with conditions. It doesn't sound like we're going to approve the, the, the whole thing, uh, at any point tonight, but. Um, you know, there's a couple of options in front of us.
You know, I think if, uh, you know, they're gonna comply with all the findings from staff. You know, provide the access roadway and on final site plan review process. Provide us a more architecturally pleasing facade. I don't think there's a problem with the location in the project.
Just, just curious for, uh, from Rodney, um, based on the conversation we've had so far. Uh, Rodney, would you still, uh, say that the, um. Uh, the, the motion, the draft language for the motion to approve the preliminary site plan with conditions. Uh, that those, uh, conditions are still applicable and pertinent. Is there anything that? Uh, would you, would you have any concerns with the conditions that are listed in that particular draft?
Uh, I thi- I think I would suggest adding the, a fifth condition, which would be, uh, specific to. To delete the proposed property donation and provide the required cross connection to Florence Street. Uh, and with that addition, I would be comfortable with what, what's listed there.
Thanks, Rodney. I'd be ready to make a motion then.
Okay, please proceed.
I'd like to make a motion to. Approve only the PSPR twenty-one dash thirteen preliminary site plan for a new Dollar General retail store. On parcel numbers fourteen dash one four six dash zero zero dash zero zero three dash zero zero and. Dash zero zero five dash zero zero located on approximately one point five seven four acres on the south side of East Pickard Road. M twenty, you said, is it southeast Bella Road in the northwest quarter of section thirteen? And in the, uh, B seven retail and service highway business zoning district, finding that May twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Site plan can comply with applicable zoning ordinance requirements for preliminary site plan approval, including sections fourteen point two. Uh, point P required site plan information and fourteen point two point S. Standards for site plan approval, subject to the following conditions. One, provide all items. Uh, of application site plan and outside agency approval documentation required per section fourteen point two. As part of the revised site, final site plan submittal. Number two, revise the sidewalk parking and building screening, exterior lighting and landscaping details on the site plan as necessary for compliance with township ordinance. Requirements. Number three, township public services department approval of the revised final site plan. Number four, submittal of an updated final site plan for planning commission review and approval. And number five, removal of the, uh, offer to donate, uh. Remaining parcel to, uh, township, uh, as it pertains to, uh, access management.
Okay, so the motion has been made as, as stated by Commissioner Buckley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fuller, further discussion. All right, if not, we'll proceed to a roll call vote, please.
Buckley?
Yes.
Shingles?
He had a thumbs up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lap?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Squatrito?
Yes.
Tharing?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care. Thanks, Rodney.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Well, I'm gonna be the, the guy to say it. I'd like to consider, and I don't know if it takes a motion or not, but I'd like to consider tabling our final agenda item. Um, based on our bylaws, given that it's already past ten o'clock and, uh, I'm sure that we've all been sitting on long days now. Um, but I can't recall if that requires a motion or not.
It, it does, according to your bylaws, require a motion, uh, to, to do exactly that. Uh, I will say that, that. I don't see any representative from the applicant in, in our, among our attendees. Uh, Peter, uh, did you hear, hear anything from the applicant?
I, I emailed, uh, the applicant last week and I talked with him, uh, Friday and, um. So I, you got my email and, uh, he didn't mention anything about not being able to make the meeting, so. Not sure why he's not here.
Is this one page their site plan?
Preliminary, yes, preliminary site plan.
Yeah, I look at a lot of plans in my days and I can't even figure out what they're doing here.
Well, they're, they're, they are replacing the existing clubhouse, which you can see vaguely dotted in, uh. Uh, if we're the, where the parking lot expand, expansion is. Uh, they're essentially building a new clubhouse behind the existing one. Uh, they didn't provide any details of that clubhouse. The, the details are a final site plan item. Typically, we do see some, some information in the preliminary, but this, this is the plan they submitted. It is part, uh, it, part of a multi-phase improvement project, uh, for the Summer Hill Village Mobile Home Park. Uh, they are doing. They have done a tremendous amount of work to upgrade that facility. They've done great, a great work, and so the clubhouse now is the next step in that.
Well, if, if the, if the applicant were still here and they'd waited all this time, I, I would feel differently in terms of. And it's a preliminary application, I would feel differently in terms of bringing it forward and considering it, but if they're not even here, I wouldn't be opposed to. Uh, to postponing it.
But what you could do is simply, uh, because of course, we, we don't have a lot left afterwards, you could simply postpone it. Action on the site plan with, with this, with the stated reason that the applicant's not in attendance. And that way, you're not ending the meeting early, you're simply noting that he's not here.
Yeah, no, there's still people here. I was gonna, I was gonna go through quickly through the, uh, the, the extended public comment and so on, so.
So that, that'd be my suggestion, simply postpone action on the site plan, recognizing the applicant is not in, in attendance.
Okay, if anybody is on page one forty-six, if you want to go ahead and make that motion.
Oh. Somebody else has it up. I'm, I'm flipping pages. If somebody else wants to make it.
I move to postpone action on PSPR. Twenty-one dash one four preliminary site plan from the Four Leaf Companies. For the Summer Hill Village Mobile Home Park, new clubhouse and parking lot improvements located at five two eight zero South Mission Road. Until July twentieth, twenty twenty-one, uh, for the reason that, that the, uh, applicant was not in attendance.
Great. Motion was made by, uh, Commissioner Lap. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Albrecht, further discussion. All right, roll call, please.
Uh, Lap? Yes. Fuller?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Uh, Buckley?
Yes.
Quatrito?
Yes.
Tharing?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved to postpone.
Very good, thank you. All right, so those were our agenda items, so. Other businesses, is there anything that needs to come before us tonight under other business? Okay, hearing none, uh, extended public comment. So this is the portion of the meeting where individuals. Are invited to address the planning commission on any item, whether it was on tonight's agenda or not. Uh, we again ask you, uh, to indicate your desire to speak by hitting your raise hand button. Uh, and we'll bring you across and, and you can speak. Uh, we ask you to give us your name and address for the minutes and limit your comments to five minutes on any issue. Extended public comment is open at ten twenty-one. And Mister Anderson. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
I've asked Mister Anderson to unmute.
Can you hear us, Mister Anderson? We're ready, we're ready for your comment at any time. Can you unmute him, or does he have to do it himself?
All, all I can do is ask. Uh, I can't, uh, I can't unmute him directly.
Okay.
And I've, I've, uh, I've asked him to mute, uh, twice now, so.
That's fine. As the, there's other, on, on WebEx, the host can mute and unmute people.
Right.
Okay, well, I don't want to cut him off, but, uh. Maybe we'll skip ahead, uh, to final board comment. Are there any comments from commissioners? I'm hearing something. But he's not even in, is he, is he still in our room?
Uh, he actually, well, I, uh, I went back to a lounge talk. I'm not, uh. Sure what happened with that, uh, but I'm gonna.
But he's also not in, he's back on attendee and with the attendees.
Tell you what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna promote him to panelist. That will open him up another step, and we'll just see if, if there's something. That, if that makes a positive difference. System is running quite slow. Okay. Well, I promoted him to panelist and I, and, uh, he did not come across. He may have removed himself at the same time.
Yeah, he's no longer in the attendees list either.
Yeah.
Okay, well, sorry, sorry about that, Mister Anderson. Um, anyway, uh, any comments? Uh, so, so, um. Unless, uh, unless Brian or Lisa has anything to say, we'll go ahead and close the extended public comment. Uh, at ten twenty-four, and, um, any comment, final comments from board members? Um, just as a reminder, then, um, we're meeting, we're meeting on, are we meeting on the thirteenth also?
We, we have a, a special meeting, uh, set for the thirteenth, uh, to focus on the, the zoning ordinance, set of zoning ordinance amendments and, uh. Uh, and also likely the Parks and Recreation, uh, Plan Update. Um, so that, that is planned, uh, in from the, the, the look of these items, uh, we're, we're going to have a busy regular Ju- July agenda, so. I would, I would recommend that, that you plan on that special meeting for the thirteenth.
Yeah, for sure. Um, okay, so special meeting on the thirteenth and then, uh, regular meeting on the twentieth of July. Commissioner Thar.
Uh, seven o'clock on July thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, any other comments? Okay, well, thank everyone for, uh. We, we earned our pay this evening, I think. We, uh, was a, was a substantive meeting. So if there's no other items, then, uh, we stand in adjournment until. The thirteenth of July, so enjoy the rest of the month and happy July fourth, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.